May all of our interviews be backy.
Alright, should we start? We have one.
There's Kevin.
Wait, so who's your point?
We just have two to go for though.
Two more. I mean, you're not voting for a little while, so it doesn't matter, but.
We have Angie.
Angie should be coming. I mean, I only heard from Kate, as far as someone not coming.
So Angie showed up here at three o'clock.
Oh, she did?
No. She's coming back at six thirty.
Sorry.
Danielle.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi guys.
You.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anywhere?
Anywhere.
Alright.
The world is your.
It's a mix and mingle.
Oyster. It's so nice to see you.
Yeah, it was in the last.
The library is your oyster.
Yes. That's not helping.
Oh, yeah.
nearest for you.
Did you hear? That doesn't help at all, does it?
No, it's good. It helps me now.
Is it over this, over there?
Are yanks really hard? Does that help?
No.
Yeah, no, there should be a. Don't yank.
They're childproof. Camera.
Ooh, worse.
Better, better.
If anybody's noticing the problem, it's the right person.
Yeah. Kevin, in the recording though, you'll be like full face in light.
We need window shades by Monday. Hi.
Kids are playing.
Can you revise the budget?
We want you to feel the vitamin D.
It's gonna be there for a while.
Yeah, a couple minutes at least.
You have a plug right behind you.
I do? That is.
Is that not work? Yeah.
Is he looking for a cord?
Do you have long enough cords?
I think we might, but we'll see how it works.
Oh, yeah, because you thought that's gonna be long enough.
Good thing I didn't go the other way, huh? That's good.
Make sure that's one that works.
Is that better?
Yeah.
And who's gonna get up and fix it next?
Uh, well, I need to get some steps in, so.
Yep, there we go. We got a way.
Success.
Alright, everybody settled?
Yep.
Alright. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 1st meeting of the Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. Uh, my name is Jeff Cassidy, and I call this meeting to order at 6:34. And, uh, we are live streaming, um, on DSC TV. Uh, we are also recording this meeting for future reference. First on our agenda, as usual, we have community comments. Uh, we do have a Zoom link open for those who could not make it. Uh, do we have anybody on Zoom, Jenny? Besides our school committee members? Okay, seeing none, uh, we will continue on. There's nobody else here in person. Uh, first order of business here is the superintendent comments.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's nice that it's a, uh, school committee meeting and it's still light out. Spring is coming. Um, so Denny and I will just provide some general updates, and then obviously we'll give you updates about our, um, bigger picture work when we talk about my evaluations. But, um, first and foremost, um, would like to say congratulations to the crew and cast of Into the Woods. I'm not sure if anybody was able to see that, but another amazing high school production, um, that kept many of us singing throughout the weekend. So, um, congratulations to our high school students. Um, on Friday, and I think this is exciting for all three committees to know, as your students move through the schools. Friday was High School Seminar Day, and this happens every other year, where we ask community members, um, parents and families, alumni to come and talk about their fields, um, or their passions. And so students get to pick four seminars to attend during the day. They get an hour lunch, which they love, um, and the day actually starts with an induction. So let me back up and start with that. Um, so Seminar Day begins with, um, the induction of an individual into the Dover Sherburne Hall of Fame. And this year it was a Miss Rebecca Vizilis, who is a, um, retired Dover Sherburne teacher from the History Department, um, who began our China, um, exchange program years ago, and she was beloved by students and faculty. Unfortunately, she passed a few months ago. She was due to get this award before that happened. Um, her family was present, and it was actually an opportunity for the faculty to come together and have some closure around that. Um, but it was a wonderful testimony to her and her love of kids and her passion for teaching. Um, and then we transitioned into the seminars. So we had almost ninety people come, um, and present on photography and law enforcement and the medical field. Um, here you see students, and, and it's interesting because a lot of the presenters tried to make it interactive. So here is a presentation that was done by a nurse, and she had given it to a doctor, um, for a patient that was about to be discharged. And then the nurse comes in and has to interpret the order and sometimes finds mistakes, and then has to go back to the doctors and says, this won't work because. And so she had given them orders, and they were trying to figure out the medications and kind of what the treatment plan was gonna be when they got home. So, um, lots of great things. Um, who else was there?
Entrepreneurs.
Who did you wanna see?
Um, Jake Auchincloss.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So he wrote the scores for Oppenheimer and several other, um, important films, um, but a special, special, special day, and you heard it from the kids. They were just amazing, as they always are, respectful, asking good questions, but they still appreciated the idea to explore avenues that they might not have other, otherwise thought about, or know people in those fields. So, great success on Friday. Um, looking forward to it again in, in two more years. And excited for your kids to eventually, um, experience it if they haven't already. MCAS season is underway, especially in the world of ELA, and math will be coming around the corner in May. So just a reminder that although it's no longer a graduation requirement for the state of Massachusetts, our third graders, our eighth graders, and our tenth graders are still going to take the exam, um, so that they can show that their competency and mastery of the Massachusetts State Standards. So the test is not going away. It just does not have to be passed for Massachusetts. However, the school committee policy for Dover Sherburne still has MCAS as a graduation requirement. So the regional school committee is gonna have to come together with a subcommittee to look at that and see if that's something that you want to remain, um, or change. And so that'll be a conversation coming up, um, this spring. We are also deep into the hiring process, which is exciting, because we're getting to meet lots of new people, um, who wanna come and join our team and work with our students. Mr. Conklin and Mr. Healy are part of the, um, the screening committee for our middle school assistant principal, and they were together all day yesterday and all day today, finding the, the best candidates for, for our leadership role. Um, and I just wanna thank all of our principals and teachers who sit on these hiring committees, because it's a lot of work to screen, the, um, resumes, hold the interviews, and then they had them come in, um, and do, um, mock lessons, tasks, you know, that they would be expected to do in their role. So, um, it's exciting, but it's time consuming, and at the end of the day, we'll be excited to bring on some new folks in August. The budget process, so, um, thank you to Jessie and Mark, who attended the Dover Warrant Open Hearing on March seventeenth. They presented the chickering and regional budgets without many questions, which was great. Christine, Kate, and Dawn all presented, um, to the Sherburne Advisory Hearing on Saturday, March twenty-second, which was a bit longer than the Dover meeting. Um, it lasted all day, but, um, we had presentations on the Pine Hill Budget, the Regional Budget, and then the, um, turf fields, that we're hoping, um, to replace the one right behind you. So just a reminder that Sherburne Town Meeting is coming up on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth at seven PM, and Dover Town Meeting, Monday, May fifth at seven PM. Both of those are important for all of the warrant articles that will be presented, including the school budgets and the turf fields. And there seems to be some concern, um, among the Sherburne, um, officials around supporting the financial aspect of the turf fields, as well as the environmental component of it. And despite the presentation by Dawn and Mark about, um, the turf and what's real and what's not real, um, there still seems to be concern. So if you are in favor of the turf field or not, um, I encourage you to come to the town meetings and to show up at the polls, because I think that's, you know, it's not a given that there'll be a new field, and what comes after that is gonna be, um, interesting. So Sherburne Town Meeting is April twenty-ninth, Dover Town Meeting is Monday, May fifth, and then the elections, um, Sherburne, May thirteenth, and Dover, May nineteenth. Hoping to see people out for that. Other items, let me have our other items. Sorry about that. Um, other items. We're kind of out of order. How did that happen? Hang on. Oh, I know what it is. Okay. So another example, um, I apologize, this is out of order, going back to Seminar Day. Um, for our students who take engineering at the high school, and for those of you who know Nick Grouse, the teacher, he's a fantastic individual, fantastic human, the kids love him. he's a fantastic individual, fantastic human, the kids love him, and he's super passionate about engineering and technology, um, super innovative. He came up with a project this year, working with Brandon Hall, who you might have met, the Director of Technology, and the students designed video game arcade cabinets and built them from scratch. And they work. And they were the first students to ever present at a Seminar Day, to have a student strand, um, to talk about their process. So here's the video. I apologize, this is out of order. But it's unreal.
And they like coded the games and everything?
Yeah, pretty cool.
But they didn't code the games. They bought the games and they had to program it to work with it.
The technology. I'll read you what he wrote. He said, "Our students picked a blueprint for an arcade cabinet, programmed our CNC machine to cut the parts. They assembled the parts, created decals and applied them, laid out and wired a control panel, three printed parts, programmed a computer, and have been adding and testing ROM games this week. In the coming days, we'll be adding code to the computers for safe shutdown and custom loading screens, and also finishing some last minute details." Um, and there's a whole gallery of photos that I'm happy to share with you, but it is unbelievable what our kids can do.
Can you get all the quarters I put in those YouTube? I want my money back.
And so they're trying to determine next steps for these, for these arcade games, and I'm sure there'll be probably some donated to various aspects of our community, and it's perhaps a fundraiser that our kids can decide where the money, uh, will go. So, super exciting. So that was Seminar Day, a highlight of Seminar Day because the kids got to present about the work, and, I mean, you should see the teachers flooding down there and the classes flooding down there to see this. It's just amazing.
Dover has a new community center soon.
I know.
I already recommended that.
I was like, Dawn, you need to come see these. Okay, so I apologize. Going back to updates, um, social media presentation. So as you know, both Dover and Sherburne-esque communities, um, have done a, uh, a townwide or two-townwide read of, um, the Anxious Generation. Coming out of that, I know that there was a panel presentation at, uh, the Pilgrim Church in Sherburne. We are partnering with the Pilgrim Church and other local, um, places of worship and community agencies to support, um, two additional presentations, all under the theme of social media with kind of different angles. Um, tomorrow night, it's Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, uh, 6:30 at the Sherburne Community Center, Dr. Jill Walsh will be coming, and I mentioned her at my January update. She's from BU. If you remember the example I gave that I stole from her about the kids watching nineties videos of us actually talking to each other in high school, that's her. Um, so she will be talking about kind of the science and how social media affects the adolescent and child brain, and what we can do as parents to kind of support and intervene, um, you know, with this new world that we're entering. Um, and then just announced as of yesterday, there is going to be a presentation and a question and answer. Um, we're calling it "The Paradox of Parental Controls", and it's gonna talk about, um, it's gonna be informational. Uh, Brandon Hall will be there, and some of our health teachers, they're gonna talk about the, what you, what your kids can do on social media that you might not know they can do, or what others can do with social media involving your students, um, what sort of monitors and, um, tools can be used as parents at home, um, and what are some of the implications of all of this, um, within the community. So our school resource officers will be there as well. So I encourage you to come, April 30th at 6:30, if you wanna hear kind of the practical side of how these things can play out in school and play out in the community. Um, another follow-up, um, is around the challenge success, um, information. So in January, uh, you'll remember Kate McCarthy and Ellen Riley came and presented the challenge success data ten years into the program. Um, and Colleen, I think it was you that asked us to go back and, and look at subgroup data. Um, so we did a deep dive, and Denny's gonna present some of that information.
Yes. Before I say that, one other event that I'll mention that has happened recently is our Battle of the Bands. It was a fantastic event that, um, had, I think, nine different bands that played at the region, benefiting JB's Keys. It was a great event. Very well organized and very successful. So that was another great event. Um, so again, just to follow up on the last joint school committee meeting in terms of a breakdown by race and ethnicity of some of our challenge success data. Um, so you can see here the breakdown in, um, this is students select, self-selected and self-identified, their race and ethnicity at the middle school and at the high school. Uh, you might be wondering why there are so many more categories at the middle school than the high school. Um, the high school is a survey that has been given for, you know, twenty, more than twenty years. Um, and to kind of preserve some of the comparisons that you can make in that survey, they've kept the demographic choices the same, whereas the middle school survey is a newer survey, uh, which is why you can see that there's a lot more options broken down for middle school in terms of, uh, race and ethnicity. Uh, so this is kind of the current breakdown of how students, uh, self-identified. When we take a look at average hours of sleep by race and ethnicity, you can see that it's sorted by the most at the top. Um, so if you take a look at the middle school, you can see that it is our South Asian or Indian and our Asian students who are getting the most sleep, um, an average of eight point six hours a night. Um, then you can see going down the list, um, our white students getting an average of eight point two hours a night. Um, and then at the bottom of the list, our Hispanic or Latinx students at seven point eight, and our black students at seven point one. Um, at the high school, um, our white students are getting the most average amount of sleep per night, seven point three hours. Um, and then you can see at the bottom, our black students are getting, uh, the least amount of sleep, uh, per night. Uh, so I know that there have been some questions about, you know, our Boston students and the impact that their commute has on their sleep. Um, and there's some other data here that will help make a little bit more sense about this difference in sleep as well, that I'll get to. Um, when we think about engagement, so we've talked about the different types of engagement. There is being disengaged, so really not having any connection to what's going on in school. Uh, doing school, which is kind of just going through the motions, being compliant. Purposefully engaged, so kind of a higher level, and then being completely fully engaged, understanding the meaning behind everything you're doing, applying it to multiple situations. Um, this is the middle school data that you can see broken down by race. So you can see that in terms of our students being fully engaged, um, our South Asian or Indian students report being the most fully engaged. Um, and then our black students or students that declined to answer, um, were showing the lowest amount of full engagement. Um, and you can see the breakdown by purposely engaged, doing school, and disengaged. Um, and then we can share these slides because it's hard to see up on the screen. Um, this is the high school data. Um, so again, it mirrors a lot of what we're seeing at the middle school with our Asian students saying, um, that they are the most engaged, and then our black and African-American students saying that they have less, uh, levels of full engagement. Um, another area that we want to break down for you is extracurriculars. Um, so this is at the middle school, the whole average number of hours that students are spending per week on extracurriculars. Um, and I think that if you look at these numbers, you can see their students are very, very involved. Like, this is a ton of time. You know, at the top, our, um, our white students spending an average of six point nine hours a week, uh, something extracurricularly. Going down the list, you can see the breakdown by race. But then I think it's really interesting to look, and this is the middle school, at the percentage of students working a job at least half an hour a week. Um, so we have our Hispanic and Latinx students at the top of that list, then our white or Asian students, um, and you can go down. But the point that I was making earlier about when we see our black students at the high school level getting, um, lower amounts of sleep than some of their peers, I think some of it correlates to what we're seeing here. Uh, so this is the high school, percentage of students working a job at least a half an hour a week. Sixty-one percent, sixty-one percent of our black students are working some sort of a job. So that is kind of taking away potentially from hours of sleep that they're able to get in addition to, you know, possibly, um, you know, our, for our Boston students that commute into work. Um, but that's kind of something that I think is important for us to bring to, um, our staff's attention, just the amount of students that are saying that they have jobs. And when we're thinking about workload and trying to create balance in our students' lives, um, you know, I think for all of our demographics, this is a sizable amount of our students that are engaged in some sort of working, paying job, uh, for at least a half an hour of week, a week.
Is the extracurriculars tied to the school extracurriculars or just general? We don't know.
I think it's just general.
Yeah, anything that is done at a school. So that could be like a Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, it could be, um, a math club that they're a part of outside of school.
Do we have a sense of the commute time? The average commute time or the, the highs and, um, you know, the range of commute times?
For our Boston students? So I think the first pickup is, um, for the bus monitor, I think it's a five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Yeah, we, uh, gained fifteen minutes this year.
And then the students arrive to their first stop in Dover Sherburne at?
The first stop is Chicaring at about seven fifteen, I believe. Seven twenty. Then it's Pine Hill, and then they come here.
And the school here, as you know, doesn't start till eight forty.
Um, and you can talk also about some of the ideas that have been proposed to address some of these things that you've seen.
But I'd say what we have done is that we don't have to have, um, before morning support really at the elementaries because we push that time. So they're getting there about at arrival time. There's like twenty minutes difference. But other than that, they are, we really took that, um, unstructured time away, and they're coming right in when, when school starts for the most part.
But the middle and high school students are, you know, potentially spending, you know, two hours, two, two and a half hours before school, just getting to school. If they're picked up at five forty-five, they're not getting to Chicaring and, I mean, to the middle or high school until eight thirty. Um, you know, that's a lot of time, and the reverse is true on the way home. So I think we need to be very clear about what the reality is for these kids, when they're doing homework, if they're able to do it on the bus, if there's Wi-Fi or not on the bus, is a major consideration. If they have the space to do homework. This is an incredibly long day for these kids. And there is an achievement gap between our MEKO students and our, you know, Dover students. And we should be diving in. We owe it to these students. They go to all this trouble to come to our schools, and to see that many disengaged is really disheartening. So I think they, they would, I'm more engaged when I've slept, you know? So I think we need to look at the actual effect of having that little sleep on students. And if we want them to be able to thrive here, um, I think we should, we should really look at the transportation issue.
I'm talking about the superintendent's advisory.
Yeah, so, um, and it'll come up again in my goals too. So as you know, I brought together the Student Advisory Committee, um, with Denny as part of the Student Voice Initiative, and we have twenty, twenty to twenty-four, depending on the day, students, six through twelve that come together. At the beginning, Denny and I really asked that group for input on our initiatives, which were around, um, the instructional practices that are happening in the classroom that involve deep learning, um, and developing a survey, um, for students to give feedback to their teachers at kind of the January mark so that teachers can take that feedback and kind of inform their practices. And then we turned it back to the students and said, "What do you care about?" And they picked kind of three top topics. One was, um, graduation requirements and how much flexibility they have in, um, choosing their classes. The second was, um, more community building between the middle and high school because they had such a positive experience working together. It's not many times they get to be on committees together, and they wanted more of that for everybody. And the third was, uh, a real concern about Boston transportation. And again, within all three of those topics, there's things that are reasonable that we can do. And then for those of us who live in education or administration, unfortunately, you know, graduation requirements, you know, we have to remain competitive. So maybe there's some place, you know, wiggle room, but, but, you know, there's not a lot. We can't just throw everything up in the air and, and change them. But relative to the Boston transportation, um, the, the students who kind of dug in and did some research and some thinking around that presented to Dawn and Denny. Um, and that's what all three groups did. I, I gave them the people that can make the change, and they presented their proposals to them. And so they, um, you know, and it's interesting, it's with anything, right? When you get a new crop of students, it's a new topic for them. So back in the day when we did the Change and Start Time subcommittees, um, I know Dawn and Andrew Keo, the superintendent at the time, did a lot of work with our Boston students and Monique Marshallville, the director, about looking at possible, I mean, they rode the bus at different times to try to figure out what worked. Um, and they sat down with our MEKO parents and our MEKO students and said, like, okay, what's the reality of this? Dawn, I don't wanna speak for you, but at that point in time, that group of students at the high school, can you talk?
It was middle school and high school actually preferred to all come to, to travel as a unit together. Um, a lot of it too is parents are going to work, and they drop, you know, our families here are K to twelve. So at that point, it became not any kind of other issue other than at that point, that cohort of students wanted to, um, travel with their cohort, with their, uh, family members. Um, and that's when we started improving things that we could do here, creating the MEKO lounge at the high school, getting new furniture here at the middle school. So Monique enhanced what we could do in the morning programs, uh, better breakfast. So that's one thing I shared with those students is we need to, they didn't have really the voice of all the Boston students, and I said, "That is important to gather that and see" because there are family dynamics that made it them want to do that. And the only other issue we have, and we have to see if it's changed, that's why we are running the bus, traffic getting out of Boston. If you wait too long, they would be late. So it's a, it's a, one of those problems that are not easy to solve because of all the other things that are happening. But don't think that we're never thinking about that and investigating that and seeing what we can do. Um, we have worked tirelessly trying to figure it out, um, to see if we can enhance it. And I say, we gathered fifteen minutes this year, which was great for the elementary students. They are getting there with their peers, um, and starting the day, so they are not having that time having to wait. And it's fifteen minutes later here, and we do provide, um, support here and breakfast, uh, for those students, so.
Have we asked the MEKO students themselves, this cohort?
So that's what, that's what they were gonna, that was the next step.
They walked away with, uh, next steps, right? And we're gonna continue the conversation, just because we made a decision in two thousand nineteen doesn't mean that, that decision needs to stay in, you know, two, two thousand twenty-five or two thousand twenty-six. So it's an opportunity to revisit it with new voices, new perspectives, perhaps new ideas, um, and really sit down and work through it similar to what we did with the Calendar Committee and, and really dissect it.
Right, that's great.
Yeah, and I think, you know, this, this is data, um, that we have, um, looked at as a leadership team, and we're, we're putting our heads together too about how to, um, approach the discrepancies with sleep, with engagement. Um, you know, obviously the achievement gap, um, it's an ongoing conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
The listening session. What was that? And how many students did you have, um, show up for that?
For the, the one this year or back then?
Following.
So this was just that group of twenty-four, and so there was, um, a third of them that worked on Boston transportation. Um, some of them were, were MEKO students and some of them weren't. Um, and so part of the next step is to go back and gather more information and data from MEKO students and MEKO families and bring together larger groups of people. So that was just kind of a beginning of the conversation. Um, and between Dawn and Denny, they were able to give them some constructive feedback to say, "All right, this is how we're gonna keep your question and your, you know, um, potential solutions going."
Beth, can I ask, are they planning to interview the, um, the families or ask, ask for sleep quantities from the parents? Because a MEKO parent that I spoke to said, "Well, they didn't ask me how much you sleep." So I think it would be the self-report on sleep, um, you might find different answers if you ask parents.
That's a good point. I encourage you. Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Do you have any general benchmarks of when Boston Public School buses start running or their charter buses? So I went to Boston Public Schools, my commute was over an hour as well, like, they started pretty early. So I'm just wondering, are other neighborhood buses going or are we the only buses going through town?
I think we're hitting a lot of, I think all the MEKO buses for all the areas have the earlier start. You have to keep in mind too that they, they can't, they cover a lot of ground. They're doing, like, it's not just a neighborhood in Boston. And that's one thing we talked about with the MEKO students, it would be great, like, if MEKO would try to start doing neighborhoods. That would make it so much easier on all of us.
Yeah.
And so I think that's a recommendation that we can put back on MEKO is how they assign students. So, and to me, they seem like they'd have their own community too, right?
Yeah.
Your neighborhood. So that would definitely enhance transportation issues because we all grapple with, uh, with the same thing.
Are they all transiting to one place where the bus picks them up, or does the bus do, it's a route through Boston?
It does a route through Boston.
And something that came up last week or two weeks ago, uh, it was MEKO Advocacy Day at the State House. So we had a number of, you know, administrators from districts, parents, students, former Boston students, the non-MEKO students there, um, just advocating to our state representatives, uh, to continue, to not only continue to fund MEKO, but to allocate additional funds. Uh, so when we had our smaller sessions with our more local representatives, that was something we brought up is, how can MEKO maybe think more outside of the box in terms of the transportation? Maybe having, you know, well, we couldn't have just an elementary and a secondary bus at Dover Sherburne. What if we did like Westwood and, you know, kind of pooled with some of the local towns? And we also said, like, things like this cost money, and it would be something that, the reason why we need our legislators to advocate for an increase to the MEKO budget as well. So some of it kind of rests in our legislators' hands to advocate for the budget coming into.
As for homework, I was assuming that most of it was probably done on computer or some sort of tablet. Is that correct? Or, oh, essentially like, uh, middle school and high school kids? Does the bus have something like a hotspot on it for them to be able to access online?
That was something that we explored this year with our new head tech director. And I think a lot of the feedback we got from the students is that they wouldn't... And I think a lot of the feedback we got from the students is that they wouldn't be doing it on the bus.
That's true.
That that's their time to unwind, be with their friends, listen to music, kind of, you know, some of them will take, you know, a little nap on the bus. But they didn't think that they would be productive doing homework on the bus if we even offered that.
Respectfully, the student that is optioned with us, he has teachers who have times that they have to have, he has to have the work in by four thirty. And they've not been lenient about the time that the work has to be submitted, and so he's been forced to do it on the bus or be late, which is generally what has happened, and that's affected his grade. You know, that's just one story, but.
Yeah, that's important. And I think as we, you know, dive in, we'll hear more stories and more examples and figure out what we can address.
So during COVID days, we had Zoom, right, in all the classrooms and all the teachers were doing it. So on an especially long day, because they're playing sports and doing drama and stuff. So suppose if they're going back, reaching back home really late and sort of have to start really early in the morning. What if they were, not for everybody, but for the high school students at least, when their time sleeping is so important? What if they could be connected on Zoom on some classes some days? Not all classes, obviously, not physics or something, but say history or English. They would get some semblance of learning staying home when they're responsible enough to stay home and catch on if that was an option. For a few, because I know they wouldn't be getting that extra one period of DR like some kids do, right? They'd have to be on the bus, so they don't have that luxury as well. I know how much my kid wants to sleep in on the day of DR. So if they were to take a break, you know?
Yeah, that's worth looking into, and I think one of the proposals was looking at schedules, and unfortunately, the way the high school schedule is right now, they don't start with the same class every day. It was like, oh, can we give our Boston students all a DR first period so that they can then have a longer commute and not worry about missing class? But not with our current schedule, but it's on the table to figure out, like, is there any flexibility? So thank you for the Zoom idea.
So extracurriculars, and the last category we looked at was student support. So teacher care and support that our students are getting, as well as students reporting feelings of belonging. By the middle school, it's hard to see.
What is teacher care? Like, I feel cared and supported by my teacher or I'm receiving the extra supports?
That they feel connected to teachers, have relationships with teachers, feel supported by them. Oh, so this, that's a great question too. So it's a scale from zero to five, so five being the highest.
Luckily, not ten.
So middle school and then the high school data. Again, as Superintendent McCoy mentioned, that we take this data along with the panorama data that we're getting from students and kind of put it together to look at how it's all interacting. And I think that we see in both of our surveys that our Black and African-American students are reporting kind of a lower sense of belonging. So just continuing conversations that we're trying to have with the leadership team and the building leaders on how we can continue to improve this. So, you know, it's obvious that there is an issue, and I think that we're all really committed to trying to continue to figure this out and to, you know, address the situation. But these data points are helpful in shining a light on the fact that we need to be doing a better job. And I think we are all committed to doing a better job on that as well.
And you might have said this, I was just commuting from Boston, which is brutal. Are are we getting their voice and feedback, like, the actual students who are experiencing this, not the individuals who are not? But making sure that we're not saying, like, here's a great solution, but we're actually engaging with them, that is.
It's part of the process, yeah, and we're just starting this process again, but yes, that'll be part of it, yeah, yeah. Before you went into teaching and learning updates, there was one other update coming out of our January joint meeting, which I think it was Martha who brought it up. And she was curious about staying up to date with any sort of executive orders or funding news that was coming along. So Jeff asked me just before the meeting started, and I just got a memo from the Superintendent's Association asking our legislators for updates. So this is like changing by the minute. What we can tell you with this, please, Dawn, feel free to jump in, is that as we know, the National Department of Education is being dismantled. And therefore, it's now the states that will own the educational system. I think that we are blessed to live in Massachusetts because we have a strong curricular framework. Whether you love it or hate it, the MCAS does measure whether or not students to some degree are meeting and learning those standards. Hopefully, it's a work in progress. And so I think that in terms of teaching and learning and supporting kids, we're in a really good place. Funding, the president did acknowledge that by law, we still need to financially support special education students and at-risk students. So that funding is not going to disappear, it has to come from somewhere. And it's just a matter of who's gonna manage that and what stipulations are put on that in terms of, you know, what schools do, that's to be determined as well. And the other piece that I just wanted to share is, I'm, I'm not sure if you've been seeing this in the news or if you get all of the same mail that we get on the inside of school, but several of our Massachusetts officials have spoken up about what school will continue to look like in Massachusetts, including Governor Healy, Attorney General Andrea Campbell, Secretary of Education Pat Tuttweiler, and former Commissioner of Education Russell Johnston. And I just want to read a couple of pieces from their joint memo. Attorney General Campbell and I, meaning the governor, are issuing this guidance to send a clear message that Massachusetts is going to stay true to who we are. We believe that bringing people of different backgrounds and perspectives to the table, including women, people of color, and the LGBTQ plus community is a strength, especially in our nation. We are committed to work closely with our incredible schools, colleges, and universities to support all of our students. Attorney Campbell says, I'm proud to partner with the Healy Driscoll Administration and Secretary Tuttweiler and in updating guidance to affirm that Massachusetts schools can continue efforts to ensure diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. The laws have not changed and schools must continue their work to make sure that every student, regardless of background, can access educational opportunities in the Commonwealth. The Attorney General continues, I am grateful for our administration's partnership. I'm sorry, Lieutenant Governor Driscoll says, I'm grateful for our administration's partnership with Attorney General Campbell and her team. Today's guidelines strengthen our commitment to ensuring that everyone has equal access to our K to twelve schools and institutions of higher ed. In our state, we will continue to collaborate with education leaders to break down barriers to education so that all students can succeed today and into the future. The article says, this joint guidance reaffirms that these recent federal actions do not prohibit diversity, equity, inclusion efforts in the admissions and access to higher education or other educational settings. It also includes steps that K to twelve schools can take to set their students up for success. Schools and higher ed institutions should continue to make affirmative steps within the law to create and maintain a positive school climate where all students feel safe, supported, respected, and ready to learn. This includes reviewing current practices to ensure they comply with all applicable antidiscrimination, anti-bullying, and civil rights laws. This country has long fought for all students to have equal access to a public education. The federal government is attempting to take us back decades, exacerbating real inequities that still exist today. Today's joint guidance reaffirms that Massachusetts will continue to acknowledge and address historical and persistent gaps in student access, as seen here, and achievement, including Black and Brown students, students with disabilities, low-income students, LGBTQ students, and other marginalized student populations. We remain committed to supporting schools and higher ed institutions within the law to build more equitable educational systems for all students. And that was the Secretary of Education. And lastly, the former Commissioner of Ed says, at DESI, our educational vision calls for all students to be known and supported and for families to be known, respected, and valued for who they are. Our vision also calls for us to develop and sustain an educated workforce, from paraprofessionals to superintendents that is diverse, culturally responsive, responsive, and well-prepared because we know it benefits students. We remain committed to this work and to the principles reflected in our history and social science curriculum frameworks that effective instruction celebrates the progress of our country has made in embracing diversity, while at the same time encouraging honest and informed discussions about both racism and racism in the past and future. It is essential that schools should continue their support for marginalized students, says the Commissioner, including LGBTQ students, to reinforce that they belong in the school communities. Research consistently demonstrates that when schools take proactive steps to foster inclusivity through strong policies, affirming practices, and supportive educators, students experience improved mental health, academic success, and overall well-being. School and district leaders are strongly encouraged to continue implementing policies and practices that protect all students, including transgender and non-binary, non-binary students. The Safe Schools Program for LGBTQ students is available to provide training, technical assistance, and implementation supports to help schools uphold these commitments. If your school or district would like assistance in continuing this essential work, please reach out for the contact information. So that's the guidance that we're getting from our state officials, and I just wanted to put that out there. Happy to take any questions.
So I have a question. Special education budget comes from Department of Education to our schools?
I don't know if it's the Department of Treasury or if it's gonna be redistributed to the state level.
Does that go to DESI and then DESI just gives it to the schools that are needed based on their needs for special education?
Dawn, do you want to talk about the intricacies of that?
Yeah, so there are formulas that they use, but it's more the, the DESI does determine how that is allocated.
DESI made any guarantees that in the absence of federal funding that they'll?
They don't really have any funding, other than what, yeah.
But state law still protects students with disabilities.
It's mandated, it's a mandated funding program that has to still, there's, the law's still there. Yeah, for special ed and for low income. So those, those, like, so that's the Title I grants. And our special ed grants will be there in some capacities, just where the, who's gonna oversee them. I mean, DESI will still oversee them, but it might not have the federal ties anymore.
Thank you, you reminded us about Circuit Breaker.
Circuit Breaker is totally funded, funded by the state.
Do you really know what represented, like, what, how much of a gap that would be on the fiscal year budget?
Yeah, so in your budget book, you have this sheet in the back that says summary of grants. So you can see, like, what's a two forty, the two forty is the most substantial grant that we have, and that funds educational assistance for special ed. So I think the region, I'm gonna say, it's like two, the one, a little over two hundred, maybe two forty, two hundred and forty thousand. It's much smaller at the elementaries, like two or three VAs at the elementaries.
So like a quarter million dollars for your unit as far as?
Out of a twenty-nine million dollar budget.
Yeah, so I'm trying to make sure.
Oh, yeah, no, it's very small. Yeah, no, no, we're, we're, so, because a lot of it too is, is, it's, it's wealth and, you know, your special ed, so.
Yes, if you look through those, those budgets, not that we want to rely on any of our taxpayers more than we do, but they're not insurmountable amounts that we couldn't find.
We're fortunate it's not gonna, yeah, we don't have as big a concern as, as other, like, other cities and towns.
Okay, so just to transition to teaching and learning on a happier note. You have, you have the fun job.
Okay, so quick teaching and learning updates. It's like Superintendent McCoy said, it is MCAS season. So I just want to thank our assistant principals who are doing a lot of work right now organizing the MCAS and also our special educators that are making sure that all of our students are getting the accommodations that they need for the MCAS exam. One thing that I will say, and I'll talk a little bit more once we get to June and some of the Dover and the Sherborne meetings is with the math MCAS, we just want to set our expectations that we have a new curriculum and that there could be some growing pains as we're adjusting to the new curriculum. I have a lot of faith that our teachers or students are doing a great job, but it's very normal when you're implementing a new curriculum to see a decrease in scores in that first year. It's not what I'm anticipating, but I think it's important for you all to know and for the community to know that that is a possibility with the first year of implementation. With that being said though, I have to spotlight our two math coaches, so Laura Halloran at Chicaring and Lindsay Weiner at Sherborne, who were asked by DESI and TNTP to present to the whole state about what they've been doing with our math implementation. So Dover Sherborne is gonna be one of three districts that's highlighted at this webinar that's coming up on Thursday. So really proud of them, and they have done so much work. So to see them recognized and highlighted by the state is really, really exciting and kind of speaks to how thoughtful their implementation process has been there. And then just a couple of quick updates, as I've mentioned, I think in January, we've launched our program review of our elementary ELA programs. So we now have a committee that's been formed, we took the feedback from the community and teachers. Currently, right now, the committee is looking at research on early literacy and looking at some of the rubrics that have been put out by various organizations like the Reading League. And we're hoping to, at the June School Committee Meeting with Dover and Sherborne, to present to you our findings of what are the criteria we're looking for in a successful elementary ELA program. So that got launched. We launched our program review of the elementary Spanish program. So we've set out a timeline for what that's gonna look like. Hopefully, by next January, January twenty twenty-six, we'll have a presentation for all of you that gives a report on the goals of our elementary Spanish program, whether or not the program is meeting those goals, and any recommendations on any changes or adjustments we need to make to the FLESS program or the FLESS curriculum. I think all these have come hand in hand with a study that we've been doing at both elementary schools in terms of instructional time. So for two weeks, we had elementary teachers keep track of every minute of their day and what they were spending it on. So currently, that's in progress, and we're looking forward to seeing that data and just to figure out what, where time is going and to, you know, make some decisions. If, for example, we get to a point where we're gonna be adopting a new elementary ELA program, the first thing is gonna be, well, how much time do we have to allot towards that? Some programs are gonna say ninety minutes, some are gonna say, you know, you want an hour reading block and an hour reading block. So knowing where the time is being spent and if we need to make tweaks in several places will be really helpful in that process as well. So that's in process. Another thing that is just beginning, and the regional hear more about this, is kind of a reorganization of our middle school science curriculum. So some of you know that currently our sixth grade curriculum, I have to make sure I get this right, our sixth grade curriculum is earth science. Our seventh grade curriculum is life science, and our eighth grade curriculum is physical science. We're looking at a reorg that is actually in line with Massachusetts frameworks. So it's not one specific science in each grade, but it's a combination of all of those three and a progression from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We've done a lot of studies about this, we've talked to neighboring districts and some of our comparable districts. We've had conversations with high school science department, and we think that this reorganization is gonna be beneficial, especially for a lot of our freshmen that take biology, that will be having a closer glimpse at their unit on genetics in eighth grade rather than it falling a lot earlier. So more updates for that to the regional school committee. But that's something that wouldn't go into place next year, next year would be a planning year, and then it would unfold on a rolling basis. So that would be the, oh goodness, the fall of twenty twenty-six, sixth grade would change, seventh and eighth would stay the same. The next year, we would roll up sixth and seventh grade, so really looking at four years out before the entire sequence is possibly changed as well. So that is the teaching and learning updates. A couple more things, recently, we had our math consultant that we've been working with, Dr. Alison Mello, come in. This was such a great professional development opportunity for our teachers. She's an expert in math and also an expert with districts who are implementing Reveal. She went into a bunch of different classrooms and she taught lessons. And we were able to arrange it, so we got coverage so that all the teachers in that grade level could come and observe the class. And it was a really valuable PD experience for them, just to have the opportunity to see somebody else teaching the math, modeling, kind of good math practices. But then the discussions and the debriefs they had afterwards as great little teams was really, really powerful and just a nice opportunity for them to talk more about math. So the pictures that you can see up here is she was in a fourth grade classroom at Pine Hill, and she was doing a kind of kinesthetic movement activity around fractions. So we had been talking about scientific research that shows kind of the difference between males and females and males, different part of their brain activates with movement. So this was just a really cool thing that fell in line with what we were talking about, brain research and getting students up and physically, like, making fractions with their bodies. So that was a cool activity that we had. Our peer leaders, the middle school, have been busy in classrooms, working with the younger students and doing those lessons. So that's been another great thing that we've been seeing, is our eighth graders or seventh and eighth grade peer leaders getting to flex their leadership skills and go in and talk to our younger students. That is all for me. Questions?
Quick question for me, Denny, on the evaluation of the foreign language in elementary schools. Is there gonna be a deeper look at how that transitions to the middle school as well? I think right now, it's pretty obviously like disconnected from the five years of, of language that they take to then jump into the middle school.
So I can talk more about this at the Sherborne and the Dover School Committee meetings, but we have a whole set of metrics that's gonna go into the evaluation. And we're gonna have some sort of kind of quantitative number that we're seeing where students are coming out in their. And we're going to have some sort of kind of quantitative number that we're seeing where students are coming out in their level proficiency in Spanish. We're going to be sending surveys home to parents and caregivers to get their reflections on it. We're looking at data from our middle school students, our high school world language enrollment. We'll be meeting with our world language teachers at the middle school and the high school to get their, just anecdotal evidence of the impact that they've seen from the program. So there's going to be a lot of different metrics that we'll be collecting over the course of the next kind of five or six months that will lead us to the report that we'll give next January.
I just wanted to say how great seminar day was. I heard from a sophomore, or actually, she's a junior now, she's in my family, but she, she actually came out wanting to be a nurse. So now she's like, I actually really want to go into nursing, do you know what she's been making? This is, this is what you do and you actually work with the people. And so she, I think it was really helpful to her to have that hands on and she said it was fat, it was her favorite day. She was like so excited about it. So anyway, I just wanted to say.
My daughter, who thought she might go into medicine, now wants to be a DEA agent.
It's still medicine.
We'll see, with sticks, right?
Denny?
Yes, sorry.
A lot, a lot of work. I appreciate it. With, so the elementary ELA, you know, I'm going to talk about it. So the program review, are you potentially trawling at that point?
So it depends how far we get. We'll give a presentation on the criteria that the community has established on what they want from an ELA program. And then we're going to take our existing programs and measure it up against that criteria. So then it will go one or two ways, that our current programming of units of study and foundations integrity matches up with that criteria, so we continue on, or it doesn't match up with the criteria, that's when next year would be the process, if we go down that route of looking at different programs.
I get, I understand you, okay, so when, June, when you come to us, you're just going to say where we currently stand? When, when the next timeline?
What has the community, what have teachers and what is the research saying are the most important parts of a high quality literacy?
Got you, got you. When is the, we're going to meet the road as to, are like, these are the curriculums we're going to trial?
Sometime next year. Again, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen. It might, when we go through the process, they might say that units of study is meeting that criteria. We'll kind of figure out that, but then next year would be, and we've kind of started poking around a little bit at other districts and seeing what programs they're using. But we do research on other programs in the fall and then to the Dover and the Sherborne School Committees, next year, we would make some recommendations on programs to potentially pilot. Some of this could go faster. It's kind of at the, seeing the pace that the committee can work on, because it's a lot that they're doing right now. And I couldn't actually go to the first meeting, so Superintendent McCoy stepped in and she led it for me, so I was very appreciative of that.
You know, if you need them, CPAC, many other CPACs have written to the school districts on their students' behalf saying that unit study should be removed in an expeditive manner. I would second that motion. I think the research is clear, we're not helping our students. The supplementation with foundations and Haggerty is certainly barking up the right tree. And so I would say any type of expedited review process would be in the best interest for all our students.
And I know that, you know, I have heard from some people in the community that want the process to go a little faster than it's going. But in some ways, I think that we have benefited by kind of being a little bit more judicious because we're seeing this play out in other districts and, you know, a lot of districts just dropped units of study very quickly and jumped on another curriculum and there have been a lot of growing pains and there have been a lot of issues in their implementation of curriculum. So I think we are learning a lot by watching that all unfold, even some of the districts right now that are piloting. I think in talking to different assistant superintendents, I've learned a lot about, as we go down this road, what to do and what not to do. So I think that, you know, I understand the impatience that people have because it's their kids and they want their kids to get the best possible education. But I think we're going as fast as we can and I think we're going to make a good decision because of the way it's all unfolding.
Thank you. I was like, I'm from Philly, Ben Franklin said, don't be the first, don't be the last. So don't be the first, don't be the last.
If I could just reiterate what you said too, is that we have been supplementing with kind of the science of reading through Haggerty and the foundations programs. And K to twelve, we're using the revised units of study, which are revised based on more of the science of reading. And our, a lot of our teachers have done professional development around the science of reading and both of our literacy coaches are very careful. One who went to learn about literacy at MGH for her program, I mean, she gets it. They have moved away from anything that is harmful to kids or not advised. So there've been a lot of revisions, it's been a lot of work, it's been very comprehensive. So they have a lot of lesson plans now, particularly grades three through five where the, the units of study aren't revised yet. And they work well with kids and kids are learning and succeeding and becoming fluent and comprehending information and becoming, you know, continuing to be levers of learning. I think that, you know, having chaired the first meeting, it, it's just, it was a lot to get there and now there's a lot of different places with a lot of different lesson plans. If we could just kind of gather it into a few programs that, you know, did it well, that'd be great. So just wanted to make sure everybody knows that we're, we're doing the best we can of what we have and we've made revisions, but perhaps somebody else can make better revisions.
I have a comment, a question, one of the last program. The seventh, second grade Spanish teachers invited parents into the classroom two weeks ago at this point. And I just want, it was a phenomenal opportunity for parents to get to see what the program was like. She gave an overview of the class or of the kind of approach to the Spanish curriculum. And then the parents had an opportunity to watch the, the, kind of the standard classroom experience for the kids. And I think teacher, uh, uh, parents already walked away from, from the experience, just totally in awe of what the kids were learning. So anyway, that could be expanded next year or shared amongst other specials. I think it was really, really, really appreciated by parents and answered a lot of questions about what the kids are learning. And my question was with regards to your comment about the potential for there to be not the strongest MCAS scores with a new curriculum. Do you have data supporting that than other schools where perhaps they didn't do as well, but then they, they course corrected and did well sort of in the longer term? Should that happen in the Dover, Dover Sherborne, you just have the data to point to the fact that this could be sort of the baseline and students' scores should, are expected to improve?
It's hard to tell specifically with Reveal because not a lot of other districts have done Reveal. I mean, the big, like trendy one has been illustrative, which is the one that we didn't choose. And in those cases of implementation, we've seen a drop and sometimes the drop has stayed there. I mean, I'm not trying to bash illustrative at all, but there, there is not a lot of experiences. A lot of the districts that are using Reveal are either in their first year like us or in their second year. So I guess kind of we'll see where we're at. You know, I would say from being in the classrooms and having taught some of it, a lot of the thinking and math practices that are really emphasized in Reveal, I think are going to give our students a lot more tools and resilience when they do take the MCAS. You know, we had, you know, some students, it was a hard adjustment to the new curriculum and there's a lot more writing and reading as part of it. But there also is on the MCAS, and I told some of the teachers, like, I would rather have them be frustrated in the care of your classroom where you can support them than for the first time on this big scary test that they're taking. So I think we're giving them like better coping strategies and problem solving strategies that are going to serve them well if they even see a piece of math that is foreign to them on the MCAS. I think they're going to be much better prepared. So we will see.
And it was a small sample size, but when we were doing the pilot, you did have students take MCAS type or complete MCAS type questions and exams. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, yeah, part of the pilot process was looking at the three programs, Everyday Math, Illustrative and Reveal, and doing common assessments between those three groups of students. And one of the reasons why we chose Reveal is because our students in Reveal outperformed the other students. So I'm just trying to set expectations.
I, I, it would just be great to be able to advocate as, advocate on behalf of, you know, the program and the community that if students don't do as well as we would expect or the community expects, that there is a, a longer term trajectory of, good trajectory for them in, in the program. So we can sort of support, support you guys, that's all.
And I think we will do a lot of looking at the specific units and standards on the math MCAS because there's stuff that's, teachers spent a lot of time on at the beginning of the year that I would expect our students to do just as well on, if not better. But some of the units that are falling at the end of the year that, you know, we're trying to make sure we're getting to, you know, if our scores are lower in those standards, then I would say like, oh, I completely understand because they didn't get the full unit. We kind of just tried to get them, make some gestures at it before the MCAS. And, you know, we're trying to send a message to the teachers too, that they should be teaching to the test while also wanting our students to do as well as possible. So I think we will have to look at, you know, where our students did really well. And, you know, if there's the second or third unit that teachers spend a really long time on, our students don't do well, that'll be a red flag to look at. But if it's like looking at measurement, that's, that's the last unit of the whole year and scores come down a little bit on that, then that would be expected. So we're doing a lot of work over the summer, thinking about our pacing of the curriculum for next year.
And on top of that, you know, I, I was reminded recently, and I don't know if you were with me, curriculum matters, but teachers matter more. So the curriculum is one thing, but the expertise and the ability of teachers to preach kids and, and teach them the math is also important, which is why our coaches are spending time in the classrooms, teaching and supporting and coaching teachers to become better teachers. And while the, why the win intervention block is so important is because when we see that students aren't meeting benchmarks, we have, you know, double doses of them. So I think it's all of it together that we're hoping will help kids succeed on the MCAS and, you know, in their mathematical lives.
And it's fascinating thing, like I talked to other assistant superintendents about it. Like I, it's hard to figure out if, you know, there's this big growth, is it because of the Reveal program? Or is it because of the fact that we have had intensive professional development for the past year and a half? Every early release has been math, coaching has been around math, faculty meetings have been around math. So just the teacher discourse and the conversations they're having around math are the strongest, I think, they've ever been. So like, you know, I think it is the program, but at the same time, I think it shows like when schools can really dedicate themselves to focusing on something, just kind of really amazing things can happen. So.
Good question.
Thank you. All right. Uh, thank you for that. We're going to move on. We have superintendent's evaluation, which Mark's going to take us through.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Most of you have a blue folder that I handed out tonight, but there could be one or two, yeah, so.
Um, look about to answer.
Were, um, on the school committee last April, you would remember perhaps that Maggie and Judy at the regional level and goalie for Sherborne and Kristen for, no, no, it's goalie for Dover, sorry, Kristen for Sherborne, had represented the superintendent evaluation subcommittee. And they did a lot of work mapping out kind of how can we as a collective group reflect on Ms. McCoy, Superintendent McCoy's goals that were set and agreed upon September tenth of two thousand twenty four? And also on just her performance according to the state rubric. So what you have in the blue folder is kind of a timeline for our broad committee's work in the month of April and also your subcommittee representatives. So this year, I want to thank Ollie for continuing to represent Dover, for Christine Walsh for representing Sherborne, and for Angie for representing Sherborne and me representing Dover at the regional level. We are your point people if you have questions over the next few weeks. I also work, you know, in a school system, so I'm quite familiar with the whole tool and process, the ins and outs. So I'm happy to be, you know, sounding board point person on that as well. I say that because I think we had a separate workshop last year. I'm willing to run it again if there's enough interest, but if we think there's enough kind of expertise in the room, then we may not need that. It is kind of a busy month, if you look at the memo. So what I wanted to just walk through is, if you just kind of skim this, right? Here are the dots. This document here is going to be shared in a digital folder. It will be something you can just write on directly. It is the evaluation tool that we each use. So it's like many hands making light work. I think what we should think about in this document is there may be areas that we can't comment on. We simply don't have enough background on. Or maybe we have an intimate, kind of a deep story because we had a encounter or experience that was unique, and so we should comment. Collectively, we'll have all of the information kind of put together. And we'll also be highlighting a few kind of key elements here. You can see the rubric has many rows of basically standards and indicators and key elements. We'd be highlighting on the ones that we see most reflected in the goals from this year as well as just the experience and items that were shared at our school committee meetings or, you know, experiences we've had within the district and seen. I think tonight reflected a beautiful example of the way that Beth, Denny and Dawn worked together as a solid team, well organized, well oiled machine. And part of that is kind of the, the leadership, not just on the individual, but how they bring in others for their skills. There are a few dates to be aware of, and that is on the second page. So today, Beth actually did share the superintendent's goals and evidence. So even though the timeline says sometime this week, she's got it all in your email today. It's an eight page document, extremely well organized, no surprise, but it is by district goals. And you can, she'll talk about that a little bit in a minute, but I think that that will help. There are links to kind of supporting documents that may refresh our memory as well. I take my own notebook from these meetings and look through that when I'm writing. But basically, again, trying to write where you feel you have something to comment, that would be most helpful. Don't try to force something if it feels stressful because that probably ends up being not reliable data for us. And we have enough people that if we each are writing a little bit, then we'll get a nice, hopefully reflective story of the year. Also, it's just saying by April fifteenth, that's two weeks from tonight, that is when we all, the subcommittee, would hope that your writing is in to your representative, okay, at the Dover Sherborne or regional level. Because then the four of us will schedule a meeting, it will be shared, but we will organize kind of how to synthesize into one feedback document. Sometime between the fifteenth and twenty ninth, we'd want to have all of that thought organized. On Tuesday, April twenty ninth, we have another joint school committee meeting here. And that's where we get the opportunity to share out with Superintendent McCoy, just the collective kind of experience we've had, the kind of feedback we have. I find in my own work, this cycle of, you know, reflection and feedback and goal setting to be a pretty productive experience. And I know that Superintendent McCoy is a very reflective and responsive person. I think that our feedback will be helpful and hopefully we can kind of celebrate the things that have really gone well and still be able to kind of push, as we always do, kind of think of things that would help for reflection and maybe goal setting for next year. So this does do the overview. Any, I thought these are the easiest, best things to have a paper copy of, but I will send them digitally and I'll organize everything in one digital folder. When you submit your work, if you can submit digitally, that is much easier for us in terms of being able to read what you wrote. We can check back if we need to, if you don't understand a certain aspect of your work. But basically, that'll be much easier for the group, the subcommittee, to collectively express that. So there's the beginning of the process. I'll be in touch quite soon with an email just reiterating some of the key details. And if you have any questions, you can ask the subcommittee members or just forward it to me and I'll take care of it.
You might do this a year ago, but my memory, last year, we all made a copy, put our own notes in and then it was, is that how you want us to, for this digital copy? You want to do that again?
Yes, thanks, perfect. This will be an editable PDF, so it could be just, you submit your edited copy of this.
But we're not all collaborating on a single.
No, sorry, thanks. Not at all, that would get messy and, yeah, absolutely right. You don't, you don't also need to be swayed by anyone else's experiences, so it perfectly gets to express yours.
Thanks. All right, thanks, Mark. We have up next, discussion item, the one discussion item we do have.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Sir, I'm, I'm part two.
Oh, right, part two, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not going to go through the entire eight page document because that would not be very engaging. But I did mail it to you today, so it goes through the three district goals around best practices, student. practices, student voice, and streamlined communication, and then my two goals around educator feedback and professional networking. And then it goes through the four standards of leadership. So just to highlight a couple of things. District goals, the first is around best practices. If you haven't seen this document before, I know that's not the case, but we've been talking about it for three years, and we're now at a point where we have defined what these things look like in the classroom, K to 12, what teachers are doing, what students are doing, and what the task looks like. And we're using this to provide feedback to teachers so that we have a continuum of these things happening K to 12. As a reminder, Denny and I presented last summer at the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Conference to 50 other superintendents about this work, and many of them have been in touch since, saying, can you share with us resources? Can you talk us through this? So I think that's an example of modeling this for other districts. And then, school committee meetings aside, we try to model these practices when we meet with our leadership team and our principals, and they're then modeling with faculty so that faculty can see that we're all doing this work and that it needs to continue into the classrooms. We can try to be implementing these more often. It's just this, this venue is not the easiest to, you know, have voice and choice and agency, but perhaps we can work on that, Denny. Student voice, I already talked about the student advisory council and the work that we did. A reminder that last summer, we had 30 students join us for our leadership retreats in the summer, and that was super refreshing for all of our district administrators. Our teachers and our administrators have been shadowing students for our day this year, and that continues to go really well and is super powerful. Last, two weeks ago, over the last two weeks, Denny and I have been having lunch with our Chicaring and Pine Hill friends to kind of mirror the student advisory council. We've gotten lots of positive feedback about things going well. They love the library, they love reading, we have lots of lists, and constructive feedback around, Dawn, hold your ears, food. And, oh, rug time. We do have rugs in K to five classrooms, but we need to realize that as students get bigger, they're, they take up more space, so the rugs actually feel smaller. And when you have a lot of students on a rug, the temperature really goes up from body heat. So we need to start to think about moving away from rugs as they get older. But I'll let you know what the other feedback is.
Want bigger rugs.
But that was, that was great, and breath of fresh air for Denny and I to get to spend time with students. And then I linked in the evidence, we're about to launch the I Wish campaign. Denny and I made a launch video, so you can watch the launch video. That's going to go out to every classroom, and students will get two index cards, and they'll say, I wish my parents knew, dot, dot, dot. I wish my teachers knew, dot, dot, dot. And then we'll take all of that information, look for patterns, and that will then form future professional development and programming for teachers and for parents. So we're excited for everybody to see our faces in their classrooms and give us some feedback.
Beth, do you have the Pine Hill Kens in your video from last year?
No, but I am in on what the talent show video is going to be like. Literally and figuratively, I know I'm in that video, and it's just going to be more amazing than last year, I promise you that.
I'll take your recording.
So, and then in terms of communication, I don't have to tell you anymore about Parent Square. We've launched that. I gave you examples of the support that we have offered to all different stakeholders around that and what the layout and the rollout was like. We did a survey, and I gave you access to some of the takeaways. I've met with the Chicaring CSA, the Pine Hill PTO, the Middle School Positive, High School PTO, and the Guidance Advisor Council throughout the year to give them updates and get feedback. And then Denny and I are currently working on our second annual district report. You remember getting that in your mailbox last year. The next one, new photos and new articles will be coming your way, hopefully in May, if all goes well. And then superintendent goals, we continue to work with our principals about looking for the best practices, giving teachers constructive feedback, and really moving them forward in their practice. And we calibrate each other's observations when they come together as a team so that we're giving similar feedbacks in different buildings. The second superintendent goal is around professional networking. Aside from my colleagues here, this can be a lonely job, so I enjoy getting to work with superintendents, both through the Leading Now cohort. I'm in the third and final year of the new superintendent induction program, and it's been a pleasure to get to know all those superintendents, and then I have others. So examples of my work with my colleagues and peers are listed throughout that part. And then the four columns of instructional leadership. So I'm held to these 42 or so indicators. I didn't give evidence of all 42, because that would take me several hours, but I will, I did pick the six focus indicators that we had discussed that tie in with the goals and gave the evidence of those. And I also want to just take the opportunity to mention that I, as Mark said, could not do any of these 42 things without Denny and Dawn and Kate and the principals and everybody. So this is really just the culmination of a village coming together to support kids. So I just want to be clear that I rely on all those people to make sure these things are done. And that's it. And if there's anything else you want to see or would be helpful to you or a refresher to just, you know, let your subcommittee know, and I'm happy to provide it.
Is this rubric somewhere?
Yes. So this is, in fact, one thing I didn't mention, but I will express, I'll share through an email. There's one link at the end of the first document you received. I added it in, just has so much helpful information with this, just from the state level, but it has the rubric and a few videos that might help as well if you're new to the process, so definitely. Before we move forward, can I say one thing? Thank you. I feel like a lot of things I heard tonight were, I mean, I love the I Wish campaign, student-focused, like, experience and feedback to help drive things like PD and decisions that we're making here at the district level. I think it's wonderful.
Maybe we should start I Wish for parents too. Just communicate to the students.
No, that's part of the challenge success campaign too. Other districts have done that. So once we get through this, we'll make another video. But you can also leave them a note under your pillow. I wish you, you know, know how proud I am or how grateful I am.
It needs to be anonymous.
Finish your.
Did my mom say that?
Nice.
Give it to you.
Next year.
All right. Any other questions, comments around evaluations?
All right. We have discussion items, we have one discussion item, update on the capital projects.
Yes, and given some of the sensitive, or not the sensitive, but the urgent need to talk about this before your May meetings, some of it will be specific for committees, but I think it's good for all committees to hear what's going on in the world of capital. I'm going to start with Pine Hill, and this goes back to the capital project that was approved last year for three HVAC units that were going to include air conditioning at Pine Hill. Well, we had approved $400,000 for that project to do all three. And the bidding world, if the regions used to rooftop units and how those bid last year, did not fall in our favor. So the $400,000 worth of project cost, the lowest bid was $1,001,000. And so we are at the point, and we, we had an indication of this during the design process, and as the Sherburne School Committee remembers, we built a bid with a base bid of the library unit, an alternate one with the cafeteria, and an alternate two with the auditorium, because we ranked it on the priorities for us. And by doing that, it allows us more flexibility. So had we bid this all out as one, we probably would have had to walk away. But having it bid out in the three, we have options. And so just to bring you guys up to speed in the Sherburne Committee, the first, the library one was about $475,000, so we have the 400. The town right now is willing to appropriate another $75,000, and tomorrow night is that vote for that. That would allow us to be able to do the library unit. The school is hoping that we can use our school lunch revolving fund of about $125,000. We actually have a, an approval process going on right now with Desi to see if that can get approved. And then the remaining, we are going to sort of pre-bill sheet up for rent to be able to make up, and that one was about $270,000. So our hope is we'll be able to do the library and the cafeteria. We just need a couple of things to fall into place, but it's going to happen before Sherburne School Committee meets again. There's no votes that you need to take necessarily, but I wanted to make sure you're up to speed, and that's our hope, in that we have to move quickly too, because we want to get it done this summer, and we still have to be worried about the delivery times on those RTU units. So I wanted to just bring you up to speed, and I will communicate to you tomorrow night if the advisory votes for the $75,000. And then we're hoping to hear from Desi by tomorrow. We submitted the request last Tuesday. They had a few questions. At first, it didn't look like they were going to support it, but then when we gave them more information, they realized that we weren't funding the whole project, it was just a piece of the project. They seem to be a little more willing to say yes. So I'm hoping we'll have that information to share with advisory tomorrow night. So that's our hope. It's a little bit of pulling money together, but it's definitely, we just decided it's worthwhile, and it's unfortunate that the world has made things cost so much. But that is that. Any questions from anyone on Sherburne?
What time is advisory tomorrow?
Seven o'clock.
What's the food?
The school revolving lunch, sorry, the school revolving fund. So that is, so the school, your school lunch has its own revolving fund.
That we get from the state because it's free now, or this is what people?
No, this is everything. So all of your, all of your state federal and parent, like student revenue that goes to buy a lunch goes into that, but along with all the expenses? And what's left is usable funds to put back into food service. And with the increased participation from the free lunch, all school districts are seeing an increase in never-evolving funds. And there's also a, sort of a requirement to not hold on to more than three months of operating expenses. So we're at this point now where we have excess, we need something to do with it. This is a perfect thing to invest in. And so luckily, we sort of held on to a big chunk of it that will use up, and will use up everything that we are required to use up at this point in time, where we can continue to build. But the $125,000 is what we have that's not spoken for over the three months.
Do you anticipate needing any support ahead of advisory, like, parent?
No, I think.
Supports or anything like that?
I think we're good with this. I think the key thing is for Desi to give us approval to use the school lunch. I think that, just for you, the select board at Sherburne has already voted for this, so they're sending that support to the advisory. And the majority of the funding is coming from the schools. Remember, the $400,000, $100,000 was already from us as well. So I think that they, I don't see any, any pushback on that.
They just don't want to.
No, and we're grateful, we're grateful that they're willing to actually do the supplemental appropriation. So it's coming from their reserve, so their own town reserve, of their operating budget. They have money left. We're sort of at the end of March now, they know that they don't have no ice removal, snow removal that needs to take up, or any other emergencies that have come up, so they have the funds available. So it's already in this year's budget, and so they're looking to approve that, and we'll stack $75,000 on that. On the flip side, we have the region, and I think this is good for everyone to hear as well, as Beth sort of mentioned to you, that this is, this is a large capital project that the region has brought forward. The good news is that the bids, with a lot of bids opening.
This is the turf field.
Yeah, turf fields.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The bid for the turf field. So the bid opening was, and you saw the memo that came out this afternoon, was March 27th. And with that, we were fortunate enough to get, so just to bring everyone up to speed, the estimated project cost for the turf replacement, the track upgraded replacement, fencing, and the lights was $1,095,000. The bid came in at 1.53. However, during some of the discussions that we've had, we have three alternates that were also part of that bid. One was to, now I have a red track, but to have a blue track. Second one was to have the colored exchange zones. So we had put those on for alternates, because if the athletic department, if the region had decided to do that, we were going to probably find that little extra money to do those two things. However, what has triggered this is our third alternate was, and we've been, the region's been talking about this, so this might be new for some of the local school committees, but right now, we have crumb rubber fills of the little black dongs. We have, we definitely are seeing opposition to that in the replacement. And so an alternative that has, is a more natural fill, is this Brock fill. And it really is like shaved, special wood, a special tree that's grown in Georgia. So that is shaved, and that is used in combination with sand for your fill versus the black pellets. So that was on as alternate three, and that was $96,000. So in order, when you have a bidding process, in order to get down to alternate three, you have to do one and two. You can't select. So because of what we found out, when we presented this to Sherburne and some of the opposition to crumb rubber, and there was lots of opposition, but crumb rubber was one, one of the things that we can't address, we are moving forward with using the Brock fill. So with that, we're looking at the base bid plus $151,500 for the alternates. So rather than $1,095,000, we're looking at the $1,681,500. So it is less than what the towns thought they were paying initially, but it does have a few little extra is included. So just reminder for the school committee, with that $1,681,500, you voted $350,000 already to fund that. And so the revised amount that we're asking the towns to fund is the $1,331,500. So I had to bring that forward tonight, because the regional school committee needs to vote that new funding number, because these are the numbers then that will fall into the IMA. And that's IMA for the two locals, is how the two towns, the two towns fund the capital projects for the region. So that is the number that both towns will present. As Beth mentioned, we did have some, lots of opposition in Sherburne. The select board actually, on that Saturday open hearing, voted one to four against the turf. The advisory committee is voting tomorrow night. They did not seem to be as opposed to the turf. I think they were waiting to get more of the financials piece of it, obviously advisory financials. And I think there were some new concerns that they heard, which is why we're going with the Brock fill instead of the crumb rubber. So we feel like that is a, sort of a change in the project that could have a material impact to those in Sherburne who have some concerns with both the health and the environmental situation revolving, involving the crumb rubber. They also had issue with the turf carpet itself, but the manufacturing of that has gotten so much better than where we were when we installed this in 2012, that we feel like there's headway. We're adding the safety pad underneath, which is going to be extra safety for anyone using the turf. So the enhancements that we're making, we feel should outweigh, in switching to Brock fill, should outweigh any of the negative concerns that certain Sherburne residents may have. So it will be important for us to make sure people are educated and come to vote, just to make sure, because it would be detrimental to our program here and to the community in general, not to be able to replace the field and do the upgrades that we need to do.
So the reality is, if we can't use this field, we're going to start using the grass fields here and all around Dover and Sherburne, which means less access for our youth programs.
I will just say, the whole presentation that you did was completely enlightening. Now, I feel that, you know, I had no idea exactly what you just said about how it's going to impact our younger kids. I had no idea about like how it could shorten the seasons if we, it was really well done, very educational. Thank you very much.
Dawn, a quick question. I thought that the organic material freezes in the shoulder season, and makes those fields potentially not usable.
There is a slight, there is a slight risk of that, but it outweighs not having a field at all.
Right. And that was advisory committee voted down for?
The select board.
Select board went for it. And it was?
It was a combination of environmental, so the PFAS is like the hot topic, right? So part of that, I think, is still the unknown, and so they had concern about continuing to introduce materials that had unknown composition. The crumb rubber definitely was a huge concern of theirs from a health perspective for participants who are on it. I don't, I think there's, there's studies to go both ways. I think when you have the ones that say there's negative impact, it's those where there's extreme exposure. So they're true scientific, where there's extreme exposure. There's even an article on the Massachusetts Public Health site that basically says there is no. is no, there, there really is low risk. I mean, it really says that high risk with exposure to crumb rubber is when there's high exposure. And on typical use, it's, it's not something that's going to be play out for most users. I mean, high, high exposure meaning like 24/7 consistently exposed to like crumb rubber, which is, you know, ground up tires. So what, but we feel that, and I will tell you, if you look at some of the field rehabs that are going on right now, Brock fill is sort of the new environmentally friendly fill that places are using. We're actually going to go see a school at Park, we're going to see Park School in Brookline, who's had it for three years. And Lexington now is, their fields are moving forward with Brock fill.
So Dawn, this Brock fill change was made after the meeting and the vote?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then when the next vote happens, will there be another presentation that talks about the changes that were made?
So the select board won't re-vote?
Right. But the advisory?
But advisory will.
And then they'll be voted based on the-
They'll, they'll note based on this. Because at that point, on that Saturday, we did not have the bid. And so we were waiting for the bid to come and obviously to see. We went, we went forward with what we really wanted to do, and then you sort of have, you do that, and then you see what you have to sort of compromise on.
But it'll go to town meeting with a negative vote from select board?
Right, yeah. But it will also have the advisory vote on there too.
Yes, yes.
And that's their opinion, right? And it's really the town meeting where the townspeople decide whether or not it's going to go on the ballot.
Right. And it's probably education worth doing. I mean, I don't know anything about it, but especially in the region, many Sherburne people want it in. We should probably get parents to act, to go to town meeting if they care.
And we're, we're going to start, not directly through us, because we really can't do it as a school, but we have a meeting early next week with boosters, all the youth programs. They know what's going on, so they will be our, our support for moving forward. Sherburne Capital, just so you know, voted 3-0 in support. And in Dover, Dover Capital voted 5-0 in support. The warrant committees in support, select boards in support. Don't have their exact votes, but they're moving forward. What you always have to be careful about is that's their opinion again, you know, in the general Dover population are their concerns. That's why we've always got to be ready and prepared, because you don't know, you know, what may show up on the floor at Dover Town Meeting as well. So we plan on having our consultant, who the region saw presents, Mark Novak, will do the presentation for us at both town meetings.
So can he be talking about this Brock fill at the meeting?
Yes, yeah, he will. He mentioned it at the meeting, but at that point, we're still moving forward with the crumb rubber.
Dawn, what happens if one town passes it and the other doesn't? Just stuck for another year or so?
We do half of it.
Every time the other town wants to-
I think the key thing is that if it's, I don't, I don't know what a difference a year's going to make if Sherburne votes it down, if that's, if that's really their reasoning. And the other issue, if it's financial, we've got, if the region, we've got big capital numbers the next couple of years, so there is no way to keep pushing it off for the financial reason. That's why we are very, we were ecstatic at the bid opening to sort of see the numbers come in, because we felt like, this is really good. I mean, this is an unbelievable prize. I don't want to miss out on this opportunity, because this may not come along again. I mean, you saw that the bid prices ranged from the million five all the way up to a million nine forty-eight. The million nine forty-eight's in line with what we thought the cost assessment was going to be, although that had a pretty large contingency in it. But I think this is a, a great investment for us. Huge enhancements to the existing facilities over what we have. And so we are going to do everything we can to gain the support, so that we get the meeting, the approval not only at town meeting, but in Sherburne. Right now, it's slowly being borrowed, and when anything's borrowed, it then has to go to the ballot, because it's the two and a half tax expense. And so we've got two hurdles to cover. Dover, I don't believe is borrowing, so once they pass it at Dover Town Meeting on May 5th, Dover is done. Sherburne may take this until May 13th, I believe it is.
So our consultant will be at both town meetings. I believe the boosters are going to be vocal at both town meetings, and our student athletes are going to be vocal at town meetings. So if you can get your neighbors and friends there, they'll hear all the information from the consultant and those folks.
I think you've got to go after the young families who don't know, like, I read this and I was like, meh, I mean, my kids will be here eventually, but like it doesn't impact us. But if it does, right, but that's my point, like if they don't know, they're not going to go to town meeting. And definitely not going to vote for it.
That's where the youth sports being involved though, because they are like, you know, field hockey uses here, what will happen, it's going to be a, so basically, the select board in Sherburne, and you could watch the tape, wants us to do natural grass. Natural grass, we're going backwards in our accessibility for multiple things. It's not only our, our high school athletics, it is the community and the youth sports as well. You know, that was one of the reasons why they invested in converting this to turf back in 2012 was for greater accessibility for everyone to have a suitable playing field. So that's, it, it'll be a domino effect. But the issue, other issues too, we cannot, at this point in time, pivot and put, even if we wanted to, a, a natural grass field in the summer. We've lost that window. And now we could be detrimental of actually having to close the field, because we're at that point, we're, we've gone three years past, because we've tried to time this, and I've reiterated this to you, we've timed this for the middle school debt to be paid off, to give some financial relief to the towns when we're asking for a number like this. And so we can't push it any further. So I don't, I, I would be questionable if we could continue next year with the cracked track and the field being at the age that it is and still be safe. So this is the timing, there's really no possibility to push this off.
You've also done the risers. It doesn't make sense to not do the field now.
Right, no. Well, they said do the field, but do the natural grass.
And I will say, all, all youth sports are starting their spring games without having had a practice unless they've had private access to a turf field outside of the towns.
Right, so that's what it would be. And you saw our, our spring sports started on a rainy Monday day, Monday day, and none of those practices would have taken place without the turf.
And that's the one turf field in the-
Yeah, and so I will say to, to boost the regional school committee's stance on this, several years ago, probably more than five years ago now, the boosters came and wanted to put into place a plan that would put two more artificial turfs where our grass fields are. And the regional school committee at the time said, no, one turf's enough, we can maintain our grass, still do the rotation. So there is that, that balance of not going overboard, but having one field here that serves both towns, that allows that, almost like, not year-round, but almost year-round accessibility to a playable field.
Is this why there was the desire to put the artificial turf in Laurel Field also?
Yes, but it did not pass. But I think it was close. And I'm hoping a night meeting versus a Saturday morning meeting where the people who would use the turf were not at the meeting will make a difference. But I think you're right, we need to get the word out. So 2012, so we've had this since 2012, so as part of the presentation, is there things that are addressing their concerns from an environmental perspective, since we've had it for 13 years?
Right. So there's, you know, there's no, there's no testing we can necessarily do right now. We're not near a major water source. Where we are is, as many of you don't, may know, we have Medfield Town Water here on this campus, and the only sort of water that's on our campus is our irrigation wells. And we're not near anything where there would be a major runoff if there were, if there were issues with-
With very sensitive water.
Exactly. Right. And again, I, you know, it's, it's here in Dover versus in Sherburne, and I, you know, everyone, I, I respect opinions, and I think it's just the composition of the select board right now. They were very adamant about their, their opinions, but I was very respectful in saying, I feel like I can counter a lot of them. And that's what we plan to do, because the regional school committee, you know, wants to see this happen, and so we're going to do what we need to do to support that. And that's where I feel, and I think it's going to go a long way with advisory tomorrow night, that we've gotten rid of the crumb rubber as the fill and we've come with the Brock fill.
I guess tactically, from at least those of us on the Sherburne Elementary School Committee who have deep connections in the younger community, like how can we help?
So we are going to, so our athletic group is sort of organizing us right now to sort of get the word out. So it comes from the outside groups, like we-
I guess my point, though, is like the boosters are probably not going to hit the people who have preschoolers.
No, no, it's youth sports.
They're doing baseball and-
The youth sports are coming, you're coming together with us as well. Yeah.
And will there be like a consolidated one pager describing the efforts and sort of benefits of the proposal that we could help?
Yes, so we are, we have a factual website being, segment on our website right now about this, that's all factual. And so our athletic trainer is putting that together now. So once that's available, it'll be a go-to place. We also plan to put the presentation up on our website, the consultant's presentation back on February 12th, that has a good presentation along with a lot of the questions and answers that came from advisory, warrants, regional school committee. It was a, it was a, a large joint meeting that night, so we're working on, we're waiting for the bid to come in, so that when we went out, we knew what our financial commitment was as well. So now we're at that point where things are going to start to be publicized. But tonight, I need the regional school committee to vote to the new number for the project cost that would be funded by the town.
Dawn, can I ask you one quick? Can you, when you get the new website with the information, can you push that out to the committee leaders and then triple down on us?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So one last question now. So of the three alternates that you had added on, the blue color and the, what was the second one?
The exchange lanes for the relays.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the way that I've crafted this as well too, so we don't have a contingency. So if there are any little small issues that come up, we, we are not adding another layer of money to this. So what I've explained to both towns is that we're using alternate one and alternate two, which is about $50,000 as our contingency. So if things come up that we have, we need funding for, that's where that money is going to go, and we might not do the blue track and the alternate. But we had to, when we signed a contract, we have to include all three alternates because we want to get down to three. This actually gives us a way to have a contingency.
Yeah.
And these both decisions are something that can be done later in the process, because it's really just the track-
On dump.
Yeah, surfacing. And so that's sort of how we're going to move forward with it. It's both, both alternate one and two, the, the track are, were highly desirable by the athletic department. It does make a difference, and I think we're seeing it more and more, if you go to the high school athletic tracks, more of that coloring. And so that is, it would be a great nice to have, but it's also, from the town perspective, it's serving as a contingency. So it's a dual purpose. But I think that gave us a little more leeway to say, we want this blue and gray, but by, if I say, if we don't run into any issues, we can have that. If we do, we've got money there to, to cover that.
That was also highly suggested by a Sherburne champion.
It was. Why, why, if we're spending $2 million, why can't we do $20,000 for the colored track?
Yeah. Yeah.
I made the, definitely in the Brock fill sand and then the, the crumble-
The crumb rubber.
That is actually essentially the kind of artificial dirt in the turf.
Okay, gotcha. And so the first, we were going to reuse everything that we have there. So we will, we'll now have to remove that and we'll replace it with the Brock fill sand. So that's why the cost of that is also probably the cost to remove the old and to put in the new.
Okay, so the next is action item, so we'll just move this to the first-
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, do you mind? We just had orders, so we don't have to go back.
Yeah, perfect. So may I ask, just so I'm clear on this, I'm asking a motion to approve the spending of 1.68?
Yeah, so remember, it was a two-part, so we're just changing it, the million 331,500. It's, it's written down there for you on that. So motion to approve remaining, because this regional, it's going to follow the other vote where you voted the 350. So your motion to approve the remaining fiscal year 26 capital project costs of the million 331,500.
Okay.
To be funded, I'll go ahead, to be funded by member towns based on the fiscal year 26 capital cost assessment percentages, Dover 714,350 and Sherburne 617,150.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, yeah, thanks. All right, so may I have a motion to approve the remaining fiscal year 26 capital project costs of 1,331,500 to be funded by member towns based on fiscal year 26 capital cost assessment percentages, Dover being 53.65% or 714,350, and Sherburne 46.35% at 617,150.
Thanks.
Motion to approve?
From the region.
From the region, yes. Kevin?
Kevin, pardon me.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Tua. Any further discussion? No? All in favor from the region? Kate, Kate's not here tonight, so we had five in favor.
So thank you, I think this was actually beneficial to have both committees here, because it is something that's a community.
Yes. Thanks. All right. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
So we'll continue with some of the other action items, which do require additional votes here. We have a vote to approve the bullying prevention intervention plan for the second read, which is part of your package. And any comments?
Okay, so if you remember, we had a first read at our January 28th joint meeting. And changes that resulted from that joint meeting, I highlighted in yellow, including making sure that it was the language of target and aggressor. We added to the, the form that our administrators complete, the fact that we want to make sure that the supports provided to targets is separate from the supports or interventions provided to aggressors. So the first round of changes, again, are highlighted in yellow, and then we thought we would do a second read soon after that, and the first second read went to the region who had additional feedback. And I wrote this in the memo, that at that point, the region said they were hoping for, well, those, those are in green, there's not many of them. But they had also requested that we be considerate of more comprehensive support measures for the target, professional development for staff, the preventing and stopping of bullying, the educators and the planning and provisions of support to students. I went back to make sure that those things were in here, and if they had not been, I would have added them. So to support that request, I made the, the highlights in blue. So as you see it now, is what you have for a second read. I'm not sure if you're ready to take a vote to support it, or if there's a different, additional conversation and discussion that you want to have. I will say a couple of things. The first is similar to, you know, curriculum is important, teachers are more important. I would say that the plan is important, implementation and the people implementing the plan are also very important, which is why it's more than just the plan, it's the student education and the curriculum that we provide in the classrooms, it's the training that we do annually with our staff at the, before school opens with every staff member pre-K to 12. Every year, we have a session as the administrators of the district with legal counsel. This year, it focused primarily on bullying and harassment. And in February, Kate McCarthy and our assistant principals attended a workshop through Mass Partnership for Youth specifically on bullying. So we, we really made a focus this year to make sure that we got into the nitty-gritty and really worked around our processes and protocols. So Kate, while it's the principals and the assistant principals that investigate cases when they come up within the buildings, she is kind of the through line to make sure that everybody is implementing the policy in a fair and equitable and similar fashion. So she's done a lot of work this year to make sure that it's happening, the same in each building. And we've also worked with DUSI to make sure that the, the data that we're uploading to the portal is accurate. And I just recently sent you a memo in, doing a deep dive into DUSI reporting, which that's a, that's a whole job we have. One person in the district does DUSI reporting, period, because it's that comprehensive. That's a full-time job all year. So when you look at our report cards online for each of the three districts, what you're seeing is the number of suspensions for bullying. That's not the actual number of cases that we have. Those are two different things. So we are- So we are aware of when building happens. So far this year, K to twelve, we've had four instances that have resulted in consequences and interventions, and there's two currently under investigation. To date of those four, none of them have resulted in suspensions. They've resulted in other consequences and other education. As you know, a few years ago, state law changed and that there's really only three ways, reasons you can be suspended from school and it involves assault of an adult, weapons and drugs. So we've had to find other means for those four cases. And again, we still have two that are under investigation. And next steps, again, would love approval of this or additional feedback. And our principals, excuse me, our guidance counselors are all going to a workshop in April on trauma-informed responses, which will help them support both targets and aggressors moving forward or witnesses. We have an online reporting form that we're hoping to launch next fall that will be on our website, super present, where students, parents, friends, faculty can report instances. And then that'll go directly to the administrator of that building and they can start the process of investigation. And then as we have DUSI reviews for everything, it just so happens that next year we have a review of civil rights, which will include bullying and harassment. And they'll do a deep dive into our processes, our protocols, our data, et cetera. And if there's anything of concern, they'll certainly give us feedback. So all of that plus the plan.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I do. Yep. Thanks. I'd like to just add some feedback or some background, actually, education for the committees on the harms of the deep fake nudes that kids can make pretty really easily these days. There's a study that I've been looking into by Thorn, which is a nonprofit group that advocates for child safety online. They conducted a survey of twelve hundred young people this past fall. And the report highlights the relative ease with which young people can create deep fakes. Seventy-one percent of respondents who created deep fake imagery of others said they found the technology to do so on social media. Fifty-three percent report they found tools through an online search engine. The Thorn report also recaptured responses from a small subset, two percent of people who have been creating deep fake images with a large majority of the creators, seventy-four percent targeting women. Over thirty percent of the creators indicated they had made nude imagery that depicted minors. More than half of this group of creators reported that they shared these images with their friends or people at their school. To mitigate the risks, school can start by clearly identifying deep fake nude imagery as a form of abuse and including it in their policies against bullying and harassment. While most young people understand that deep fake nudes are a form of abuse, the survey found that sixteen percent of respondents targeted by a deep fake don't seek support to deal with the abuse because they fear being shamed, carry a sense of personal blame, or have concerns about not being believed. While the child safety ecosystem is just beginning to understand and analyze these harms, we must, we must design our policy for safety. I do believe that this is a new frontier. I have also read that the trauma caused by deep fake nudes on people who, who are the targets is equivalent to actually being sexually assaulted. So this goes beyond, sexual assault is not listed in our student code of conduct. But this has the same impact, can have the same impact. And it does cause trauma. So I believe we need, we need to, to name it and we need to say what we stand for and how we're fighting for it. It's, it has become a learning obstacle for girls in our school. And it is our responsibility to identify the impact it's having on our students and deal with it on a policy level so that we can be effective. We can effectively keep our kids safe. And if these students are preying on other students, they should not be in our school. So that is, that's my feedback. I understand that we are trying to, that we're trying to pass this tonight. We can either pass it with the caveat that we will be looking into this issue more deeply and we plan to address it on a policy level once we have more information. I do know that we need this, we need to survey the students. We need to find out the impact this is having. And I do know that it is our responsible as adult, responsibility as adults to be up on all of these things, to be up on what's, what's coming down the pike, new ways of exploiting our children. We need to be up on it and we need to be ready to respond on the policy level. I think we should be taking a firmer line with this type of cyberbullying and it should be an expulsion case. And I understand it's difficult to expel. I do. But we should have, we should, if we don't now, we should have the ability to keep our students safe from kids who want to exploit them, that they're, they're legally obligated to go to school with. So that's, that's my piece and we can discuss it for-
So I just want to clarify to your points. This is the plan, which is different than the policy. So to your point, you could pass the plan and then revisit both the bullying policy and the sexual harassment policy, both of which allude to cyberbullying and sexual assault. And examples of them, which don't yet include these newer examples. So you could certainly add those. I know that the terminology that is being used in certain new laws and acts is NCII, non-consensual intimate imagery. So if that's something that you want to add to bullying and your sexual harassment policies, you certainly can. That's different and that's, you know, a different level than the implementation of what happens when, what happens on the ground. So we can certainly do both.
With the things that are outlined with these playing behavioral issues outlined in, in the plan.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yep.
Not to make it more complicated, but would it be better to come up with a specific cyberbullying policy?
Well, it's included. There's a whole section in here on cyberbullying as well as it's alluded to in your policy about what that entails. It gives examples of what it is and what it's not. And certainly we can add additional examples as more things happen. I also do want to put in a plug that I'm hopeful not only are a lot of people coming to tomorrow night's session with Jill Walsh about the research and the science behind social media and technology, but the April thirtieth event, which is a follow-up that is going to involve our health teachers and the curriculum that we teach all of our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers, students, excuse me. It's going to have a principal there to talk about the implications at the school level. We're going to have our school resource officers to talk about what they've seen in the community and how it's played out. So it'll be great examples of how this continues to evolve. And I'm sure there'll be something new between now and April thirtieth that pops up. So it's an educational opportunity for us as parents and us as educators to realize what's possible, you know, at that date, knowing more is possible and how we can work to prevent it. So I think that having policies that are up to date are important. Plans that our administrators and educators can implement with fidelity is important. And education for our parents is important. And I'm putting a plea to please come tomorrow in April thirtieth. We cannot do this alone.
Option tomorrow.
And a recorded version. As someone who's children will be home alone if I leave them.
There's going to be a secret recording, but when we tell people that, nobody shows up.
Okay.
This is being recorded.
How many people are watching, Jeff?
I wonder how you get an email from somebody who's watching it, the recording. So some people do watch it.
Yes.
Probably not between tomorrow and tonight.
But to Colleen's point, I agree with revisiting the policy. But the way the, this is written, I think, does cover what you mentioned. And then if we revisit the policy, I need to go back and change a few words to be more explicit.
It's really about having to carve out for this type of exploitation. And it's, it's child exploitation, exploitation very clearly. And I believe that we need to, it, it needs to be addressed on its own because it is more severe. The impacts are more severe. Academics are detected more so than with someone who's calling names on the bus. It's very different. Or calling and saying, calling someone a name on Snapchat. It is not the same thing.
And I don't think we've discussed expulsion in this.
No.
So yeah, there, I think there is opportunity there.
It is very important. I know, my daughter's a social worker. She's works at a with autistic and special needs kids with Brigham and Women's Hospital. And there is a case that she was mentioning to me that the girl has got deep mental trauma because of probably what something similar to what you said. Yeah.
It's real. I also think there's education for everybody involved on both sides to help understand the impact of the behavior. Right? These are children who we need to teach how serious this is on both sides. And the impact of their actions. If we are moving towards expulsion, I think we have to make sure that we're setting the expectations and really clear on this is a big deal. It's very serious. The internet lasts forever. Like a lot of things that maybe eleven to fourteen-year-old child on both sides doesn't understand.
And I do think that the work that our counselors are going to be doing around trauma-informed practices will help on the school side. And we just need parents to help on their side too with making sure that they have access to whatever additional supports they need with experts. And I will say unless the law changes in Massachusetts, suspension is hard and expulsion is impossible.
Yeah. Right. The law hasn't caught up.
Is there any legislation, I know you've mentioned it before, like fighting for more, fighting for the district's ability to set its own or this?
It, yes, they've, they've put something out there. I haven't read the details of exactly what that says. And I'm happy to do that report back. I'm not sure how much wiggle room they're asking for, but I can imagine with these things popping up that this is of concern.
Are these instance- Sharing the state of it, that's very important. I think this is new to everybody and it needs education for both sides. Some kids, when they understand the trauma they're going to cause, they might not do what's, what they're trying to do. And I think it is important for us to protect our children and look deeper in this issue, both educational and policy and plans.
Yep.
Does it go from the school level to the law enforcement level?
If there is potential for criminal charge that we inform the police department and they do their own separate investigation. If there is potential for child neglect or abuse, we file a fifty-one A.
I thought specifically like middle schoolers, they weren't allowed to have phones in school everywhere?
They aren't. And, you know, we'll speak to this on April thirtieth. We've definitely seen fewer instances that we've had to address of things happening during the school day. But after three-ten, the students leave us and they don't come back until eight-forty the next day. And all of the things that happen outside of school find their way back into the building because the kids are back together again.
So legally, would we be able to do something like this where something happens off school time, off school property?
If it's bullying and it has an effect on how students are, their educational environment in the building, you can. Title nine regulations, as you know, with the change administration, has been a game of tennis. They changed, they changed again, and now they changed back. The new title nine regulations specifically say that unless, that if the event happens outside of school, there is no action the school will take. It has to happen during the school day. That's as of January something.
I apologize for the question, but is that, does that, it just burrows down? Because then you're asking a question of, is this dissemination or is this creation, you know, kind of thing? And then it turns, comes into a big, I would assume a big legal ball of wax figuring out what our, lack of a better word, jurisdiction is on preventing or controlling something like this when it does come out and we see it. It would fall under essentially bullying, but at the same time, could we be in a situation where our hands are tied even though we have a, you know, a policy about this?
Well, the good news is we don't do this work alone. And when things get complicated or especially at a level of the things that Colleen would talk about, you know, we as administrators aren't making this decision alone. We have a law firm that we work with regularly. And this year we've been on the phone with them just about every day about something around social media harassment, bullying, which is a lot. And, you know, there's other experts. Kate McCarthy has a title nine person who is an expert in the field she reaches out to. So we certainly bring in the law. We bring in the experts to help us figure this out and address it as comprehensively as we can.
And we can work to make our policies as, as stringent as we can within the, within the rules to act as a, you know, another preventative measure for, for people to recognize how serious that is too. But I think, I think it's separate policies as they are. We definitely seem to need to update them at almost probably monthly at this point. New things are coming up. But I think we have sort of a structure for the, the plan here that I think we can move forward. But I think it's pretty clear. We want to bring that forward to look at our policies. Figure out the timeline for how we want to go about that.
Well, this is a policy subcommittee.
Is there also, is the handbook separate from a policy?
So the student handbook reflects, they will refer to the policy and then talk about the application that's either decided within the policy, like our sexual harassment policy as it currently stands, has the plan in it for how to address it, whereas bullying, it's a separate document. The handbooks would allude to this document if something happened around bullying. Yeah.
I just wonder if there's an opportunity in the handbook to be really explicit about, you know, this isn't tolerated behavior. Again, be upfront, set expectations and really comment it head-on. Even if to your point, like our hands might be tied on some of the behavioral consequences.
Yeah. And I think again, April thirtieth, I'm going to say that over and over and over again, six-thirty in the high school library. You know, our middle school health teachers will talk about the work they do with kids in their three years here in this building. And then I know a lot of it's repeated in ninth and tenth grade at the high school. But they do have the school resource officers come in and talk to them. So it'd be, I think, eye-opening for people to know what the kids are taught. We just have to make sure it sinks in and it sticks.
Okay. Any more discussion on this for tonight? Okay. I think we can move forward then with the, with the vote to approve the bullying prevention intervention plan. We'll need to do three separate votes. So if I can first start with the region? Sure. May I have a vote to approve the bullying prevention intervention plan at region level? Colleen, thank you. And may I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously with Kate Potter absent.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have a similar motion from Sherburne?
Yes. Could I please have a motion to approve the updated draft of the bullying prevention and intervention plan? Thank you so much, Becca. Do I have a second?
Kristen, I have a really second.
Thank you, Kristen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a vote for, all in favor? Could all in favor? Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. And for the Dover School Committee, may I ask for a similar motion to approve the bullying prevention intervention plan?
Hey, come, so much.
Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you, second. All in favor? Hey, everybody who's here? That's four. All right. So that has then, so we've, all, all committees approved that one. We have another action item here for a vote to approve policies F H L for our second read. Am I passing it over to Angie for any comments?
So just to kind of piggyback on what we talked about. So we have a policy for our whole district and that's what these are. These aren't your handbook policies because that's school building specifics. These policies we should by law actually review every three years. And the thing about these policies is, is we have to vote on them as an entire group. So it means that anytime anything needs to be changed. That's why some of these are overly broad that we've realized. And we have these Dover or Sherburne specific policies that really should have gone into just like our handbook or our building policy because if not, then I have to call all of you in to change it. And if not, we could be in violation of some other policy statewide. So this makes sure that we are in line with our state policy. So we work with Alicia Mallon. She's with the MASC. And so she does a broad read and she says, you're compliant. Well, this policy, I don't even know what it says. I don't know why you have it here, why you would state all these things, why you have it. And I'm like, okay, we don't need it then. And then she'll say, you know, some of your language is off. And so that's what these are. So the policy F that we're dealing with, it's our second read. So if you all have any questions, this is a broad discussion on it. This is about the facilities of Dover Sherburne, how appropriate. Because it talks about when to retire a facility, when it's no longer maintaining its use. For instance, maybe when a turf field is no longer safe. It talks about that the goal of the school committees is to provide adequate facilities for the number of students in the requisite schools. And said facilities must provide the best support for our educational programs. And the purpose also has to be mindful of the limited money. And the purpose also has to be mindful of the limited money we have as a district and the priorities to use the best available resources. The section also deals with the retiring of facilities when they are passed through useful purpose. How to redress a new facility if one has to be procured and the procedures that must be followed. Additionally, it speaks to the naming of facilities and the guidelines that are to be followed. If you look on that specifically, that's when perhaps you have a student who passed away, they, they do not encourage you like permanently naming on facilities. Things that are already named, you don't go and take the name off. But there was just a kind of a statewide policy that it's, it's not maybe to do a scholarship or something else in their name. So those are, those are the things in there. So you can see, most of these, you can see where we had to remove certain things because it's a redundant policy like section F A dash E. It was redundant, so there are certain ones that you can see, we removed them for section F B one and F B A A were removed because they were encompassed in another section. There was a lot of duality that happened. We'd address it in one section and it'd be addressed again and again and again. And so it made our manual really large and it just didn't need to happen. So all of these are reflected by the MASC version, so it's all covered. And then policy H is the next policy we have to address. And it's about negotiations, which is timely because we're coming along that time again this next year. And so it's the process of negotiating with the bargaining units recognized by the school committees and authorized by state law. It's just mandates that the committees may hire a negotiation, negotiator and duties of the negotiator. Because we, when we deal with our teacher committee, they have a negotiator on their side. And we also have a lawyer that helps our school committee representatives in negotiating policy. Generally, that whole policy is fine, it's all aligned with the MASC guidance. The titles that were changed were just to reflect they are in the policy and there were grammatical corrections that was made. There, there was a lot of change on that with regards to it, so we did it as a total rewrite. But if you read it, it's exactly in line with our MASC policy. And section L is the education agency relations. That's a policy to encourage the liaison with other educational agencies to broaden the scope and effectiveness of learning. So that's just essentially, if you, if you looked at it, it's, it's how we deal with different, different co-educational opportunities that we have. So, and there was not, there was some overlap. And so we took out some of the existing language that was in different policies and then we changed grammatical problems. And that was, that was about it. This was just about how to organize and dedicate the, the different educational learning ideas. And a lot of this is things, the school committee, we don't have a lot of impact, impacted to that unless it's, you know, for hiring, for allowing another position to be added for our finance areas. Otherwise, we don't, we don't really give input into how they teach, what they teach. I mean, they give us a course curriculum for the high school that we always look at and approve. But you know, we just have checklist that we make sure that we have. The, the one interesting, the relations with non-public schools, that one kind of confounded me. For a bit, because I'm like, what, what, we're a public school, I don't know what we're talking about, a private school. But anyway, there are these things out there that are, that are enjoined and we just, you know, that was it. So do you all have any questions about what you read? Or any questions about how it was written? There's a lot of strike throughs, but it's all covered. If not in one section, some of these were covered like five times and it really did not need to happen. So any questions so far?
I'm too surprised by how much more left than there was.
There was a lot of overlap. I mean, and it was interesting too, because some of the grammatical stuff too, I think we stopped Alicia because we're like, oh, don't forget, we're three committees. And she would write, I'm like, no, we don't want it written that way, we want it to reflect this on the committees. And you know, she said that we're not unusual because there are a couple of other regions. But, but there is a lot of overlap and there's a lot of things that were just specific to us. Where we got very much down into the nitty-gritty of how we want things done. And it was really more of a, a policy handbook thing that we needed instead of this broad base to try to, because it didn't even apply to all three schools. So we're, so then we were having to write paragraphs. Paragraphs were written about this goes for this school, this goes, and I was like, this is a lot. What, I mean, we just need the broad base, we have to make sure we follow the law. And then we, we state what it is, but then we wanted to leave it up to each, each building and up to our administration to say, this is how we function. Because I don't want to get in there and tell them how they're going to teach their math curriculum, that's really not my forte, ever. Just that they have to have the state mandate, make sure that we uphold it. So are there any questions otherwise? I think all are doing all those. And I've got some more finance for you.
So we're going to clean up though, are we going to do that or how are we going to do that?
Yes, we'll edit it.
Okay, so we can take a vote then on approving policies F H and L on this second read. I'll do the same order, have the region.
Okay, sure. Could I have a vote by the region to approve policies F H and L, the second read? Kevin Karri, thank you. May I have a second?
Colleen Burke, second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any further discussion, region? All in favor? Thank you.
All right, question here is, thank you, same for Sherburne?
Can I please have a motion to approve policies F H L on the second read from the Sherburne School Committee? Thank you, Megga, could I have a second? Thank you, Nathaniel, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And on the Dover side, can I have a motion to approve policies F H and L as, as described here? Thank you, Golay, do I have a second?
Jacob, second.
Thank you, Kate, all in favor? All right, is everybody? Thank you very much. Next, we have a vote to approve the transportation contract for twenty-six through twenty-eight.
Yes, so in your packet, you have a summary of the bidding activities. So we did have six vendors request our bid specifications. We had bid opening day with just one vendor presenting a bid and that was Michael J. Conley, our existing service provider, which I will say we were slightly relieved at that it would be an undertaking to switch transportation companies, especially one that serves us so well. The, so we bid a five-year, so it's a five-year contract that we put out. You will tonight approve a three-year contract with the opportunity in year three to extend for the year four and five. We're only allowed to enter into three-year contracts. It came in basically where we thought when we budgeted, just because of the past experience that we've had. So the first year increase is at fifteen and a half percent. Year two is five point three two and year three is five point four five. Over the five-year contract though, it is thirty, thirty percent, which is up slightly over the last five year. And just to add some perspective onto that, the new buses are about fifty percent more than the last contract. And as you know, the labor market's continuing to increase and the, the need to retain drivers means that there's constantly an increase in our driver hourly rate. Just to give you some perspective, the fiscal year twenty-five daily bus rate right now is four hundred and five. We're going up to four hundred and sixty-eight for fiscal year twenty-six. So in line with previous years, we sort of see a little bit of a larger increase in that first year. And then this, this, this five-year contract, we actually have a little bit more substantial in year two, three, four and five. But that's just the nature of sort of the market right now. You each will approve your own separate contract. And once I finalize a few more things, each chair will sign the contract on behalf of their committee. So the breakout you have by district is Dover's, Sherburne's and Regions. Again, this is just the base for the to and from transportation for the hundred and eighty-one days. There are some ancillary services that are provided that I sort of highlighted below, really the special trip cost, which is something that we can negotiate and which I have continued to negotiate because I felt like those price increases were a little bit higher than I would have expected. And as of yesterday, I did get another proposal. So I will let you guys know it's mainly the impact is at the high school for the athletic buses. And so we won't see as large of an increase as what I document here. The other increase, just to highlight, is the fuel adjustment clause. So as we know, we're finally, we're seeing an uptick in what diesel fuel is looking. Our old contract had a base price of three dollars and the new contract is a base price of three dollars and eighty-six cents. So that's another little bit of an increase. We technically have been paying that because we have the fuel adjustment clause, so it's already in sort of your numbers. But now it's built into the base of the contract. Are there any questions on this?
I just wanted to know if there's been any updates on electric school bus, that being, electric buses being an option?
Yeah, there's still in high, high, you can't get them. And I think the districts that are eligible for the grants are the ones that are like Boston, right? Are getting them because they're getting actually those funded. I will tell you from the individual providers, like Conley, and when we speak with them, there are still a lot of kinks to be figured out with the electric buses. And one of the biggest drawbacks we, or the stumbling blocks we have is the infrastructure, the charging stations. So if you remember, we were part of a Metro West group that was looking at if there was any way we could do shared cross-infrastructure. And there, there's really not, if you think about how our buses do to and from and then go out and do extra curriculars. That's another issue that we have, we don't have a whole, two sets of buses that can do both. So I think it won't be, it's obviously not this five-year contract, but there's still hope that, that will continue to evolve. And it'll become more attainable for like just a normal school district to be in. I will say that some of the school districts that have been sort of out there in the forefront, Concord Carlisle has buses. I've heard though that they are in the parking lot. So it is, it's hard to, it, it, it makes, it makes good environmental sense. But from an operational standpoint in our environment, it's still sort of difficult to match the need with how the buses work. Again, it's also retraining the mechanics, it's all new training for the mechanics, it's the parts, there is a lot involved. So it's, it's a much more complex, I've learned so much over the last year. But it's a much broader, complicated endeavor than just saying we would like to get electric school buses. Where we can start making a difference is our handicap van that does a lot of school transportation probably is going to need to be replaced and we're looking at doing at least a hybrid for that when we do replacement. So it's those baby steps that we can take, that we can manage because that van stays local for transportation. So that is where we'll see is probably try to take a step into that in that direction.
Do we have any idea what the total cost for fuel is for the, the year for our buses?
Yeah, you can, if I, I could calculate that because there is, there is a base set of miles per day in the contract.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wonder what the savings, sorry, I was just wondering what the savings would be.
Well, there's, but there's, there's costs, there's a different set of costs, right?
Right, so it's cost benefit.
Yeah.
Do we know if with buses, I'm assuming they're diesel?
Yes.
Do we know that if electricity would actually be more efficient than diesel?
Miles per?
Well, yeah, well, it's comparing apples and oranges, but you know, considering the number of times you tour on, the number of times it stops, it actually might be, there is a case, there's an argument where sticking with diesel might be more efficient than switching over to electricity. Even though electricity doesn't have, you know, as we see it, the environmental impact from just the vehicle, there's also all the other environmental.
Which I don't, I think.
Electricity production, all those other things to, you know, get them in, instead of just diesel.
So I think there's still, that's an evolving sort of segment to sort of see. But that's, you're not seeing a lot of school districts, even if they wanted to, to convert because of the supply chain. And again, it's the infrastructure that would stop us, even if we could afford to get the buses. It's very costly to set up the infrastructure. And you need to actually do the super duper charging ones because we don't have time to sit here and do that. So I think that was some of the information that we learned as being part of that grant. Looking into that and understanding sort of the, the different situations with what the charging stations can do, what we need them to do and how you have the grid to support it.
Right.
Yeah. So we need to let, you know, the electrical companies need to get involved and make that investment because it's not something we can do on our own.
And if things did turn around in three years, we actually could up those.
You have the opportunity, exactly.
To continue, so.
Yeah, I will say that their plan is, so we typically get new buses every contract. So this spring, they've already actually purchased our buses, it's a good thing they got the contract. And so you will see those switching over, they're going to start putting them on the road this spring.
I do have a question about that, especially with it getting colder in the winter and warmer faster. Are the buses heated better or air-conditioned?
Yes, so the new buses actually have a preheating mechanism that are allowing the, the buses to, they explained to me and I'm not going to do it justice, but there is an enhancement to the bus that they will be warmer faster. There's a preheating setting that will be activated on the buses. So that was an enhancement.
It's a, it's a wish, not a, you know, like, do we get our names at least printed, Dover Sherburne schools on the buses?
No, because they're not really our buses, they're serving us because those buses go and do other things.
Other?
Yeah. We sort of own them, but we don't fully own them.
Conley or something like that or?
No, they, they own them.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I will say though, a lot of times you don't really want to have the name. There's, it goes both ways of what you're, if you want to display, but you'll see a lot of Michael J. Conley buses around.
A lot.
So I mean, exactly.
That's the name of the school district.
Donna, I've asked this question before. I thought we were going to put out to bid how much it would be to add bus tracking.
So we don't have to put that in the bid. That software that we would purchase separately and administer ourselves, that doesn't have to be part of the bid process. We did talk about, we did talk about that with our bus contact and they highly, they highly recommended not doing it. They have had other Conley districts go down that path. It is a huge administrative task. And if you don't have a particular reason why you want that information, it almost creates another position because we own it. We own everything, we own setting up the system, we own setting up the parameters that every parent would have. A child changes the bus, we have to do all that and we'd have to ban any calls that come. So he didn't recommend that we entertain doing that unless there was a real reason why. A lot of districts, he said, have started it and have left it because of the administrative task that it is.
So they don't make it simple enough to, to that it's practical. Because I think from Chikering's perspective, the, since the beginning of the, not maybe the beginning of the year, but as the year has gone on, sort of morning drop-off seems to have gotten worse and worse. And I've talked to parents, I'm one of them, why I drive my kid is because the bus is very inconsistent. And you, kids would go out there and be like, I don't know if I missed it and it starts to get a little bit later. And then you're like, all right, let's just go. And so most parents by this time of the year are just like giving up, a lot of them, especially in the morning.
And that's just concerning to hear to us, like if we would know that, then we could talk to Conley and find out, are they starting? Because the elementaries are the first runs, there should be.
It's when there's, it's when there's substitute bus drivers, which you never know when there's going to be substitute bus driver. And they literally come fifteen minutes apart from each other at times because substitute doesn't know the route as well and starts maybe a little bit different time.
Like that's the, you know, not the norm, but the exception that we have substitutes. Because we, you know, our attendance is actually pretty good for our nineteen buses. But that's kind, the kind of feedback, if we can get that, they are very attentive to any constructive criticism or improvements that we want because they are here, I mean, very customer service oriented.
Okay, yeah, it's probably something I work with them with specifically on routes that aren't driving down the neighborhood streets. It's the pickups on the corner of the busy streets, whether you're on Dedham or Center, Center or Walpole. Because then you have little eight-year-olds, six-year-olds stand out there in, in busy, busy street and stuff for maybe too long, so.
Okay, well, again, I think, oh, let me know about that though, because then we can sort of get them to a little bit, be a little bit more attentive to that.
Okay, thank you. But yeah, I didn't realize the, it wasn't more of a plug and play system to track a bus, you can track everything this day.
As to like what diameter or. As to, like, what diameter or what bus that you, that you allow parents to track, right? It's, it's like, specific to your student.
Yeah, that makes sense for safety, yeah.
Yeah, it's not just a wild, you know.
Yeah.
Let me see where bus fifteen is right now.
Okay.
So there is a motion on the back for each committee to award your district's public school transportation. And if you want to make it real exact, then you can throw in the amount, and I have the amount for the three-year contract listed for Dover, Sherburne, and the region.
Okay. It's on page ninety-four.
Okay.
So pass this to the region to, for a motion for a vote here?
Okay, hold on, I'm making my way to page ninety. Thanks. All right, Kate, so on the region, may I have a motion to award the Dover Sherburne Public School Transportation Contract to Michael J. Conley and Sons for the three-year term in the amount of, what's the amount? Holy moly. Yeah, like, three million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars for the annual base bid and all other related established prices for incidentals and transportation, and the fuel adjustment costs as submitted in the bid form. Motion to approve?
Conley.
Conley Burke, thank you. May I have a second? Angie, thanks, Angie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, and I'll pass it over to Sherburne?
Could I please have a motion to award the Sherburne Public School Transportation Contract to Michael J. Conley and Sons for a three-year term in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars for the annual bid, base bid, and all other related established prices for incidental bus transportation and the fuel adjustment cost as submitted in the bid form.
Kristin, I believe so much.
Thank you, Kristin. Can I have a second? Thank you, Megga. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And for Dover, so can I have a motion to award the Dover Public School Transportation Contract to Michael J. Conley and Sons for a three-year term in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the annual base bid and all other related established prices for incidental bus transportation and the fuel adjustment cost as submitted in the bid form? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, we have everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. When I have the contracts, I'll reach out to the three chairs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And nice work on fighting the good fight on transportation. All right, so that leaves us down to one last action item in vote, which is specifically for the region. So I'll leave that over to the region for approval of overnight out-of-state field trip for the high school.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the overnight out-of-state field trip for the high school? That is, Kevin Karri, thank you. A second? Tella, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor, perfect. All five who are here, yes. Motion carries. Thanks.
All right, thank you. So our consent agenda is one single item tonight. So we have approval of the joint school committee meeting minutes, January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. That one we can do as a whole body, correct? Yes. Okay, do I have a?
Well, no, you can do that one item, because you can do the whole consent agenda as one body.
We have to do, we have to do individual committees. Okay, I don't know, because it was joint school committee.
Unfortunately, you're not getting the benefit of having multiple items.
If it was joint school committee, we are a joint school committee. All right, so I will pass it tomorrow.
May I have a motion on the region to approve the joint school committee meeting minutes from January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five?
Angie Johnson, so much.
Thank you, Angie. And may I have a second? Oh, man, that was tough. I think it was Colleen. Thank you, Colleen Burke. Any discussion? All in favor? Excellent, all five who are here, go to yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, and Sherburne?
Could I have a motion from the Sherburne School Committee to approve the minutes from our joint school committee meeting, January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five?
Becky Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becky. May I have a second?
Kristin, I really, I'm sorry.
Kristin, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, and now can I have a motion from the Dover School Committee to approve the joint school committee meeting minutes from January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five? Thank you, Golay. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jesse. All in favor? All right, so moved and approved. Informational items in the package, we do have summary of the fiscal year twenty-six budgets. Not sure if there's any other comments that you want to have on that.
Just as you went and go at the town meetings, I thought it'd be good for, you go see all the committees together, and the capital projects and where we landed, which I think we had three really good budgets this year, so.
Thank you, Donna. And do we want to discuss any future items for our April twenty-ninth meeting to make sure we put it on the agenda?
So that'll be the presentation.
Yes, that's going to be our presentation on the evaluation.
It's also a five-thirty start, because the Sherburne Town Meeting, which all of our Sherburne members will walk over to, it starts at seven. And that's the day before the April thirtieth presentation.
A lot of time at the region.
So as a reminder, getting ready for April twenty-ninth, I'll send information tonight, or more likely tomorrow, if that's okay, but just kind of an overview, digital access to your copy of the PDF with the highlighted standards. And I'll probably send like a friendly reminder in like a week or so, just seeing if you have any questions and how the writing is going, because two weeks from tonight, hopefully your writing is into your direct representative. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Any other items? And of course, in the meantime, if anything comes up, send a message to your chairs, get it included. All right, now do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mark, you have some move.
Do I have a second?
Kristin, all second.
All in favor? All right, I.